Welcome to the January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three, six thirty P. M. City Council meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for its stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public president. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens should not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments, except petitions and requests, must address the pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers shall be given three minutes per item. However, citizens wishing to speak on more than three consent agenda items shall be limited to speaking for a total of ten minutes, regardless of the number of items identified. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to City Council shall be placed in the box on the table in the council chamber.
Thank you, City Clerk. We have no minutes to approve at this time. City Manager?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. The first item I'd like to bring to your attention is item ten A will be withdrawn from the agenda per the applicant's request.
And since it's an applicant's request, we don't have to vote or decide. They simply withdrew it?
That's correct.
All right, so ten A will not be on the agenda tonight. I believe we have some people here for ten A, so there will be no ten A today.
Mayor, I'd like to announce what that item actually is.
Please do.
Ten A is a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment number seven, two thousand and twenty-two, with annexation, which is with regard to Diamond Oaks. So if you're on the Diamond Oaks annexation, small scale, that item has been withdrawn, and the applicant is not moving forward.
That's a good point. I can say ten A all day, and you might not know that's you. Nobody go over there. So ten A, Diamond Oaks. Go ahead. We'll take a minute and let you all depart.
You can still speak. They'll be back.
I'll be ready.
Terry looks ready. We'll be here. Bye-bye. Drive careful. So ten A was a going deal tonight, huh? All right. Sure you guys aren't ten A? No.
I was gonna say, any way we can get the leadership of the fire department?
All right, here we go.
Okay, so we're on agenda item five A, which is the Titusville Fire Department Vision, Mission, Values, and Rebranding. The Titusville Fire Department will present a new vision, mission, and values. Additionally, the rebranding initiative will be presented, and a promotional video will be viewed. No actions required. Chief, a story?
Good evening, Chief. Thanks for being here.
Good evening.
There you go. It'll come there.
Good evening.
Got it.
All right. Over the course of the past year, the fire department's undergone a handful of changes, needed positive changes, but needed changes, much of which has to do with adapting to the growth in our community, as well as matching the forward thinking of the city. The emphasis of these changes is based on professionalism, as well as being intentional about moving forward into the future while maintaining traditions that are important to us as a fire department. So what you're gonna see in this presentation is an explanation of the process that we've worked through, specifically what's been accomplished, and then finally, the public launching of our rebranding video. This whole, the whole process actually started back in October of two thousand and twenty-one, and it started in my office, really, with myself, Ms. Gloria, and Chief Harris, sitting around a table, recognizing that we did need to make some changes and emphasis on positive changes, but they had to be made. We needed to adapt to some of the circumstances we were facing, and we had to move forward into the future. Two of the major concerns that drew our attention right from the beginning was, number one, our master plan. So this was October of twenty-one, and we had a master plan that was set to expire in roughly two months. So really, we're faced with two options right there. We can either rush and put a master plan together and get it done in two months and move into two thousand and twenty-two, but that really doesn't allow enough time to put together a good plan that can really be used as a tool for the next five years. The other, of course, is just to not do one, and neither one of those options were very good. Second, we had a vision which we could no longer identify with. So I went out around this, this area. I went out to one of the stations, and I sat with a crew at their dining table. Everybody on the crew was there. I looked at the least senior person who was there, a probationary firefighter, and I totally put him on the spot, and I asked him, "What's our vision statement?" And he couldn't, he couldn't answer the question, right? And, you know, he got caught a little heat from everyone else at the table, but then I turned to the lieutenant, and I asked the lieutenant. So I really put him on the spot. "Do you know what our vision statement is?" And the answer was no. And nobody there at the table knew what the vision statement was. And I have to stress, that's not, that's definitely not a firefighter problem. That's a vision problem, and that's a fire chief problem. So it had to be corrected, along with some other changes that we went through. So this process that we went through was divided into three phases. What you're looking at now is a timeline that we've used from this inception, and it goes through to two thousand and twenty-eight. And it's, I believe you have the slide on your computer, or you can just look at it in the book on page seven, if you can't read it on the slide. So the process was divided into three phases, with phase one initiating in October of two thousand and twenty-one. The work was headed with the Guiding Coalition of twenty-three firefighters, or fire department employees. The Guiding Coalition, or G. C., is made up of individuals who have a specific reach within the organization and represent every facet of what T. F. D. has to offer the community. This diverse group embodies one-third of the fire department. So there's an importance there with this being one-third of the department. Anytime you implement change, even if it's good change, you have to have a lot of buy-in. You have to have a lot of people in order to create the positive momentum, and that's why we had a third of the department do it, and I think that we were ultimately successful with that. Now, if you look at phase one, which is the red arrow on that list, the plan in this phase was to be by doing a quick assessment of our current state of the department and address any challenges that can be corrected immediately. Second, we identified long-term challenges, and of those, the primary concern became our vision, our mission, and of course, the five-year master plan. We established a period of time dedicated to these long-term improvements. At, at this stage, we needed a bridging vision, which I'll explain that in a second, to give direction throughout this transitional period. Entering phase two, the bridging period, we drew direction from this temporary vision statement, which was, "The Titusville Fire Department will become a team with a purpose." So I use the term bridging vision and bridging period because, remember, we're going into two thousand and twenty-two with a vision that doesn't really work for us, and we don't have much of a master plan either. So we needed something to identify with and something to give us vision and direction through that period of two thousand and twenty-two while we're working our way through the timeline. Now, phase two, which is the orange arrow in the middle up there, in this phase, our G. C. met on a monthly, the G. C. is the Guiding Coalition. So the G. C. met on a monthly basis. This bridging period lasted an entire year, all of two thousand and twenty-two, was dedicated to developing a five-year master plan subdivided into one-year strategic plans. The master plan will provide a broad direction for the future. Developing an explicit strategic plan prior to the onset of each year within the master plan will allow T. F. D. to narrow their focus and adapt accordingly as time changes. At the culmination of the master plan development period, the phase two, in phase two, the G. C. retired the temporary bridging vision and advanced into two thousand and twenty-three with a foundational vision, mission, and values. So phase three, which is the longer arrow up there in yellow, this phase began in two thousand and twenty-three, and it's at this point that the Titusville Fire Department moves into the future as a team with a purpose. Our responsibility is to reassess the strategic position on an annual basis. So now we have a master plan. We have a strategic plan. We have a clear vision of where we're headed in the future. And this next slide shows a more detailed image of that phase two portion of the timeline that you were looking at from the previous slide. And in the arrow there, well, let me back up. This image I had blown up on a massive poster board and hung up in our headquarters, along with the previous slide you were looking at, so we could stare at it every day. But the, inside the arrow there, that lists out all of the meetings that we had. Well, some of the meetings, we actually got together more frequent than that. But those were all the major meetings that the G. C. got together with. What's below that, in the white boxes, those were our goals that we wanted to accomplish throughout the year. So as we accomplished a goal, we took a sticker and we put it on that goal, and we got, so as the year went by, we could see how the progress that we're making. There was two reasons for that. One, we wanted to see that we were making progress and see how much more work we had to do to make sure we're on target, but also there was a personal reason, and that was, I need to be held accountable, and I need to put mechanisms in place to hold myself accountable. And if this is hanging up in our headquarters, and I have to walk by it every single day to get to my office, then I'm really gonna hold myself accountable to this, knowing that everybody else has high expectations. That was the two reasons. In this phase, phase two, which was all of two thousand and twenty-two, I'm gonna list the accomplishments that the Guiding Coalition achieved throughout that period. So they developed five main goals as a department. We did an internal S. W. analysis, developed a five-year master plan, a one-year strategic plan for two thousand and twenty-three, assigning accountability for every project that we have, assigning it to people, and putting deadlines on it, created a new, more accurate vision, mission, and values, redesigned our Maltese cross logo, designed a T. F. D. challenge coin, standardized all department letterhead forms, PowerPoints, schedules, anything and everything electronic-document wise was, was redone. It was made uniform. It looks much more professional now. And we updated and modernized our uniforms, launched a rebranding campaign, and created a promotional video. So I would like to talk a little bit about the rebranding, but first, Kyle, you have, I'd like to give you all something. Kyle would like to give you all something. So what he's handing out right now is the challenge coins that we designed.
Thank you.
And it was actually a committee within the Guiding Coalition that created these coins. Now, I have one, too. As you're looking at the front of the coin, that's our new Maltese. That's our new logo for the department. And we've used that image to create a patch, too, so that's what's on our uniforms, and that's what you'll see on our T. shirts. On the reverse of the coin, you have our, our values listed around the coin, but you also have an image of downtown Titusville, and you notice there's one stoplight hanging there on that, on that image. So this is an image of like a hundred years ago or so of Titusville. Sitting in the street is our nineteen-twenty-five American La France. It was important for the committee who put this coin together to put something on there that truly represented us as a department, that set us apart from others. And there are very few departments out there who can say they have their very first fire engine from almost a hundred years ago. So we felt like that was a great image to put on there, and I completely agree with it. In addition to that, with the rebranding is, we've gone to new uniforms. So you see some of the guys back there, to put them on the spot. They're wearing our new blue uniforms, which I have one here, too, just in case they had to run out on a call. And this, you know, we're, we're embracing the fu- future. We're moving into the future, but we also wanna hang on to the traditions that are important, too. And this color is a throwback to what our uniform shirts were approximately thirty-plus years ago. So of all the decisions that we had to make throughout this whole process, I really think that this was, was the most unanimous. They wanted this color. They wanted this design. So
That's cool.
Moving into the future, our new vision is going to be, to be a dynamic, or is currently to be a dynamic fire department at the forefront of innovation and public service. Our mission, proactively serving the needs of our community through education, prevention, training, and response. Our values are integrity, teamwork, dedication, compassion, and tradition. Those are short, sweet, and to the point, and that's, that's why we did that, because that's a vision statement that you can memorize. I don't ever wanna run into the problem again where a firefighter or lieutenant doesn't know what their vision is. So it's easy to memorize, and I believe it gives you, us a clearer vision of where we're headed in the I would also like to use this platform to publicly premiere our new rebranding video, so that's what we're gonna see next. It was good when you could finally see it, right?
That was, I thought I was missing something. You keep looking at me like you're seeing it.
So we, we broke the G. C. down into committees, and we assigned that video to one of our committees. I didn't realize it at the time, but one of the guys on that committee does this professionally. He did an amazing job. The footage of the bridge was awesome. Anyway, I had to go on about Roman Lane. He's the individual who did that. Unfortunately, he couldn't make it here tonight. So what, what's been covered in this presentation reflects, obviously, internal changes within the fire department. However, they are predicated on, on this. Our community deserves nothing but the most elite prevention, education, and response team, and we achieve that first by strengthening our team from within. And that makes us a better fire department for the community. With that, I wanna thank you all for being a captive audience and the support that you've always given the fire department, that you continue to give us. I do want to thank our Guiding Coalition as well. If I can go back to the PowerPoint. I'd like to get their names on the board. A handful of them were able to make it, these individuals. There we go. A handful of them were able to make it tonight. Some of them couldn't, but I did wanna recognize them and thank them for the hours of dedicated effort that they put into this project, and I just wanna be able to publicly acknowledge the lasting impact that they've made on, with their work through this group. So other than that, if you guys have any questions or thoughts, free to answer anything. Otherwise, that concludes.
Well, I'll just, kinda like we've already said, what an outstanding presentation. What an outstanding idea. Takes some self-reflection sometimes, and again, imagine that. The best way I can compare it is to being a head football coach, and all of a sudden, it's like you got stale, and you don't realize it, and you gotta sit down with a group in October a year ago and say, "Hey, we, we gotta look ourselves in the mirror and get something right." I'm not saying I saw anything wrong, but just like anything else, if you, if you're not changing, you're not getting better. That was, that's, that's a heck of a, not everybody does that. That self-realization. And that video is just captivating. Awesome. Just can't say enough positive things. Remember Nelson?
I've gotta say, this is absolutely cool.
Yeah, they are.
I love this. I love the video. You guys did a great job. I do have one question. Who took the cat home?
The owner.
I thought maybe it became.
Why did you want it? Did you want it?
No. I'm at Cat Max. I'm not allowed anymore. As long as the cat's safe. But, yeah, you guys did a great job.
Awesome. Thank you. Uh, member Cole?
Chief, I, I really enjoyed that, and I, I know I told you when we met last week. I says, "I was a kid, you know, you wanted your fireman," you know? So that's why I'm gonna do a ride-along eventually, but that was absolutely fantastic. And, and to have a, have a master plan for the fire department, I mean, that's forward thinking, and to, to come back and hold yourself responsible.
Yeah.
'Cause, you know, back in the old days, they said, "The buck stops here," and the buck stops there. And you recognize that, and I, and it really makes me feel good to know that, that we have a progressive-thinking fire department, a progressive-thinking chief. And by the way, I talked to Frank, and Frank's willing to work on the, the nineteen-twenty fire engine, if you want.
Oh, okay. That'd be great.
I talked to him a couple of days ago about that.
Okay.
Yeah, he's, used to be his lieutenant.
Yeah. He used to work on the engine.
Yeah, oh, he, yeah, he used to work on it, yeah. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you all of you. Thank you for what you do and how you portray yourself to the public. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, Vice Mayor?
Yes, yes. I, I concur and ditto all that has been said. Now, how do you think that your new image is going to help your recruiting efforts and so forth? Do you have any idea? Because it is really, really put together well, but I know that recruiting can be difficult. We talked about that a couple of weeks ago. Do you think that it would help that process? Some of the new alignments that you are having, I was, some was shared with me in some of the discussion, people going from station to station to interact, kind of a military-style activity. So how do you feel about that? How are you getting feedback from your crew, the staff, on this will help us out in, in our efforts to bring new ideas and new bodies and people to our department?
So there's a lot, there's a lot to unpack there. There, I think in general, people like to be part of something fresh and something new, and I think the video by itself speaks a lot to that.
Absolutely.
It really does. And there's been, there's been other enhancements and changes in our department that go along with the rebranding that just make it a, a complete package, you know? Signing off on our union contract today is part of that, so pending, pending that outcome, but we've just seen so many positive changes. This is just one element that helps keep that momentum going, but I think that it really will help with recruitment. It gets our name out there. It lets us, lets those cadets coming out of academy know that we are here. We're a progressive fire department. If they wanna be part of a department that has great equipment, an administration that cares about their firefighters, firefighters that care about each other, then, then that's what they'll see. That's the impression that they'll be left with, and that's what they'll get if they get hired with us.
Thank you.
And again, thank you. And if you were to redo that video, I think the music's simply the best, better than all the rest. That would be.
I'll remember that.
That'd be a good play. Remember that, okay?
We may not do it again for another few years, though.
All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate you. Thank you. City Manager?
Yes, before Carrie departs, those of you that attended Ms. Bisaka's farewell ceremony remember a song, and I guess Carrie's gonna now provide it.
No, I'm just teasing.
If you haven't seen it, we do have that somewhere. I highly encourage you.
There you go. You're good.
Everybody's seen it, just so you know. Everybody's seen it. It's gone viral.
But I'd like to add to the Vice Mayor's comment. The, the four things that we really focus on are the best training we can provide, the best equipment, and the best personnel and retain those personnel. So those areas that, you know, you see our So, those areas that, you know, you see our equipments, the best we can provide our firefighters, the training tower, and the training scenarios that we provide. And that's how we're hopeful that will help us with recruiting. So, on to item 6A. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission and Titusville Environmental Commission resignation of Linwood Rice with an unexpired term that will expire on 30 November 2024 for the Titusville Environmental Commission, and on 31 January 2024 for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Any comments from council this time? Any cards on this?
One, Stan Johnston.
My name's Stan Johnston. I'm on the, uh, people who volunteered to replace people on PNZ and TEC. And I see, just, just comments on this is that we're having a lot of trouble in PNZ. And I say a lot of trouble is, is that there's false reports by staff regarding sustainability and resilience, even in writing, there are false reports. And there's violations of law. The violations of law are serious. One of the most serious ones is water flows downhill. And the thing is, is as an engineer, I follow this law. The city of Titusville should also honor this law, and they don't. Water flows downhill. And I want you to understand, it's, it's a serious problem with planning, planning and zoning, because right now, the city of Titusville has planned to do nothing, to do nothing, to do nothing about this situation that I have repeatedly showed you about, about areas like Mr. LaCarmer knows about with the flood zones, wrong flood zones, missing reports, missing records on flood zones, and also the, what I've shown you before, I'll show you right now.
Does this have anything to do with Mr. Rice's resignation?
Absolutely.
I figured it did.
So, I've showed you, I've showed you this many times.
Yes, you have.
And what do you do? Nothing. Planning and zoning? Nothing. So, it's, it's a problem. So, it's, uh, false reports that are given by some staff members. And I'm talking especially about Brad, Brad Parish and Eddie Galindo. And now it looks like, looks like Rachel's gonna follow the same thing. Bad reports. In fact, is I, what I did is I went to Human Resources about this, this very issue. Mr. Donero went to our city manager, and they just threw everything in the wastebasket. So, that's what happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, need a motion, please?
Move to accept the resignation of Woody Rice for the unexpired term that will expire on November 30th, 2024 with regrets. And I would add that he is a very knowledgeable person about stormwater. And I think he's going to be sorely missed.
I have the motion from Member Nelson. Second, please?
Second.
Second from Member Cole. I too would add before we vote that he has given a great effort. He's given a great effort to this city for many years, including sitting up here, and has, is very qualified and was very helpful, I think, on both sides of that. Roll call, vote, please?
I just wanted to confirm you are accepting the resignation from both boards, P, PNZ and TEC, correct? Okay.
Yes.
Just wanted to be sure.
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Um, motion passes to accept the resignation unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Rice, for your service. City Manager?
On to item 6B, which is Board of Adjustment and Appeals. Accept the resignation of Board of Adjustment Appeals alternate member Van Zil De Jong for an unexpired term to expire on 31 July 2023. The resignation was effective to January 2023.
Adjustment and Appeals, council, I see nothing. Cards?
Stan Johnston?
The Board of Adjustment Appeals, I've gone to some meetings, and I'm having some problems, just as I'm having problems with, with council and with staff. As I write emails, please respond. No response. Please have a meeting with me. No response. You said you would meet with me. No response. So, in the Board of Adjustment Appeals, we have, I went to a meeting and I brought up the situation about what's going on with SNJ Oaks. And this has to do with these guys that are doing it, is, is that you have a survey that says that Elizabeth Avenue is 53-foot wide, but we, everybody knows it's only 50 feet wide. City won't correct it. I can't believe it. I can't believe it. Documents and so forth. I used to own property on both sides of Elizabeth Avenue. And I, 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 I've checked the surveying and so forth. City surveys disagree with it. The angle disagrees. It was city surveys and so forth. And yet, the city surveys have been over a year and it's still the same. City won't correct it. So, Board of Adjustment and Appeals has difficulties. I've, I've approached the Board of Adjustment Appeals about Mockingbird Lane. Mockingbird Lane was approved in July 21 to be eight feet wide, which is, right now, it's presently, for the most part, two-way traffic. So, the fire department approved for eight feet wide in July of 21. Then in '22, they approved it for 10 feet wide. Then in '22 later, they approved it for 12 feet wide. Because they, they, in other words, when they approved it for 10 feet, they disapproved the eight feet, made 10 feet, 12 feet. So, right now, you have a problem. Board of Adjustment Appeals, I went to them and I said, listen, what we got is a 12-foot wide driveway within a 10-foot easement. A 12-foot wide driveway with, so you understand is the Board of Adjustment Appeals is having big trouble. And right, right now, even though I've talked to them about it, even though I've sent emails about it to, to council and also to city manager, guess what the city does? Absolutely nothing. Complete ignoring it. So, I'm just letting you know that there, there are problems with it. I spoke to them also, maybe it was the DRC about some problems, but I won't go into that. So, good luck with finding some replacements. They're doing what they can, but it's difficulty dealing with the city of Titusville administration. Like, for example, this guy right here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any cards? Uh, need a motion?
Move to accept the resignation of the Board of Adjustments and Appeal alternate member Jonathan Van Ziet? Okay. I probably killed it.
You know who it is.
De Jong.
It's in writing.
For the unexpired term that will expire on July 31st, 2023 with regrets, and thanking him for his service.
Absolutely. Uh, we have a motion. I need a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Member Nelson, a second from Member Stokel. Roll call, vote?
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes unanimously. Uh, City Manager?
On to item 6C, which is the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation. At their 4 January 2023 meeting, a citizen requested the Planning and Zoning Commission investigate clearing and shoreline erosion at the Tranquility property in, in possible violation of the city's code and conservation easements. The commission approved the motion recommending the city council investigate the citizens' concerns. Mr. Parish is here to answer any questions. We have investigated it, and he'll answer any questions she may have.
Well, Mr. Parish, do you have some sort of a report that can give us an idea of what you think and what you've seen?
So, we did investigate it. We sent out an inspector to walk the site and provided some photographs. Our inspector stated that nothing has happened as far as any kind of improvements or clearing on the east side of the Old Road US-1 on that property to the shoreline, that the majority of the damage was happened because, uh, due to the hurricanes. And then we also discovered that there is a St. John's Water Management District permit that they have received to stabilize the shore according to the standards of the St. John's Water Management District. They have not started work on that. So, the photographs that you see here are primarily, illustrate the damage occurring because of the hurricanes. Uh, we have reached out to the district again this morning. We haven't heard back from them to find out if there was any update. But we will monitor the, the situation.
Uh, Vice Mayor?
Yes. Uh, who, who have the ultimate responsibility for that area?
Do you mean as far as approving?
Is, uh, I know that there is some kind of an agreement with the St. John's Water Management and the developer or, or someone to, to do the work of repair and so forth. But are we responsible for doing any follow-up or anything to, to ensure that that's going to be done? Is there anything that we can, because if we get another storm, if we get some more rain, is nothing, is only gonna make the thing, make the situation worse? So, is there anything that can be done to say, okay, when are you gonna start so that we can monitor it? What are you gonna put back? And how is it going to be protected? What type of this or what type of that is, is going to be put in its place when it's, when it's done? And how much of it is going to look like it did, we'll say, when the land was purchased by the developer and so forth, when we get it placed back into, uh, repair?
I will attempt to answer that long question. There are several things in play here. So, there is this development agreement with a master plan that stipulates that there should be a shoreline buffer here.
Right.
And then, as part of that, they are required to have easements, part of, included with the plat that was approved for this Phase 1 subdivision, that included a division of shoreline on this property for about 70 lots or somewhere around there. But it's 100 lots for the whole subdivision. That shoreline easement, conservation easement, or preservation easement, rather, is supposed to be along each one of those shoreline properties. So, I think it's about 25 feet. And I think that's what was the question here, is that area apparently was not being maintained, according to the citizen that brought this issue up to the, to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We, this is an ongoing project. It's an ongoing construction project, according to the site development permit that they have already, to go forward with the completion of improvements, including making sure that that shore is stabilized. So, one of the permits that they've got to help main, implement this, or follow along with this site plan, is to get that St. John's Water Management District permit. Now, with all permits, there's, there's an extension or expiration period. So, we have to monitor it, make sure that they are actually implementing it. I, I think your question is, if they don't do anything at all, we will, that turns into a code enforcement issue, if that's the case. They have permits that they have to follow through with.
Okay. So, it's, even though that, right now, that they have, uh, St. John Water Management approval to, to, to go forward, if nothing is done, code enforcement, the city of Titusville code enforcement stepped in and, and began to take action, so to speak?
There is a conservation easement approved with that plat. So, they have to follow what that plat says. If the developer's not following what that plat says, with the site development permit, it does turn into an, an issue. Yes. So, we do monitor it. So, the conservation easement, or preservation easement, rather, tells us exactly what they can and can't do there with St. John's permission and their guidance. Also, the development agreement, just so you know, each of those shoreline lots, those residential lots, have some, each one of those property owners are gonna have some ability to be able to do some clearing there a little bit, and to allow some improvement there. That's according to the development agreement. So, there is some limited amount of improvement that each one of the single-family property owners are gonna be allowed to do, ultimately.
And is that, when you, when the, when you say that, that the developer and the property owner, the property owner has responsibility, that in, is in, included in that 25 feet?
Yes.
Process. So, the property owner has some responsibility of ensuring that that 25 feet or it's brought up to the code or kept within the code process?
I believe that the way the plat is recorded, is that the declarations on that property stipulate that the association will have management of that easement. But I have to verify that. Ultimately, it'll be the property owner to be responsible if the association doesn't comply. So, we do have a code enforcement process. We do have a process to help make sure that the, these code requirements are implemented.
All right. Thank you. So, when you say property owner, who do you mean by that? Are the, are these areas sold to private sector people?
They will be. Yeah, there is a.
But they're not yet.
I don't know for sure. I've heard that some of the properties, the lots, have been sold, but there is a recorded plat for this prob, for this development. So, they are, and also a site development permit.
So, in the end, if, if this needs, and does need to be, you know, re-brought back together here, I don't wanna say repaired, I don't think that's the right word. Who's responsible for that? Who, who will repair that? Who will salvage that area?
So, I'll have to check the declaration documents, but I suspect it's the association. That's typically what happens when you have a common easement going through people's properties like this, a preservation easement. It becomes the responsibility of the association. It's for the entire development.
And then, again, caught my naivety. Uh, who's the association?
So, there's a, a tranquility association that was created, or will be created, as far as the approval of Phase 1 plat. And then there'll be subsequent other associations. And then there's also gonna be a master development association that'll manage the entire Antigo Bay or, or tranquility development.
Now, the permit that was pulled from St. John's is, was pulled by the developer, the current developer, to repair that, that area.
And that was done when?
That was done just a couple of weeks ago. So, I think your question, though, what I'm hearing is ultimately, who's gonna be responsible in long-term?
Ultimately, who, if we had to call somebody on the phone and say, you getting the work out there, who we calling?
Yeah. So, right now, the developer is the responsibility. Ultimately, at the end, when properties are sold, it becomes the property owner and the association.
Well, and, and let me make it clear. I'm not accusing anybody of anything. This seems to be a hurricane issue. We've seen them. They're everywhere. I get that. But since this is kind of in flux, that's, you know, it's not, there's nobody living there. There's no house. There's no property owner to say, my insurance will do this or that. That's why I think it's important we get a finger on who's going to move forward with this repair. I'm thinking that it doesn't help tranquility if they don't. So, I'm sure they're going to take care of it in some way, shape, or form. I mean, this doesn't, you know, it's, it's not sellable right now, I don't think. So, all right. Uh, Member Nelson?
And if I remember right, the association currently is basically the property owner, because he has so many votes in that association. So, until other people start coming in, he's really the one on the hook. And I think that's, that's part of the answer.
That's correct.
Yeah.
I would, I would think, and, and guide me on this, I would think, you know, you've done an investigation. I've gotten some reasonable answers. I think the thing that I'd like to, to send your way is to keep us updated on this particular issue, um, you know, whenever. And, and maybe there'll be a time in two weeks or three weeks, I may email and say, hey, what's going on with this situation? I just don't, and I don't think it will. I, I don't. I think that being that it's, uh, you know, part of the, um, sellable properties, I can't imagine that it won't be taken care of. It sounds like tranquility is, or tranquility is already moving forward with, uh, St. John's, correct? I think it's, it's moving in the right direction. I think we had a storm that did some damage, and they're, they're gonna work on it. I just want to make sure that we're, we're aware that it's moving forward. And that's really honestly what we do with this. Anybody, uh, Member Nelson?
And I just wanted to add, I did talk to some of the planning and zoning members, and they wanted to make sure that everybody understood. They had questions about it, but it wasn't like, oh, give it to council to do a formal investigation. They were just sort of curious about what was going on. So, they didn't want anybody to feel like they were being pressured.
And I would add to that, tip of the hat to PNZ for communicating on that as well. Just like, I hope it's coming across to us, I want to make sure we keep our eye on this and it goes forward. But this is nobody's fault. This is, uh, I believe it was Ian, one of them, maybe both. And it tore it up. And I just, I think it's a fair question from a citizen to make sure that there is some monitoring of this, and it is moving forward. I'm sure it will be. Um, so with that, City Managers, is there anything else we need to do with this, except we're good? I appreciate your report. And again, we'll just want to be kept up to date. City Manager?
We do have a card on this item.
We, I don't think we have a cardable. Say again? I, I, again, I'll defer to City Man, because we're gonna have a card on everything, including what time the restroom break is. But that being said, um, this was kind of just a discussion, but.
This discussion is couched as accepting their recommendation as an agenda.
We didn't accept, accept any recommendation. I just really had to say, there really was no recommendation. What was the recommendation? What was the recommendation? I mean, you said we accepted the recommendation.
No, I was just reading, I was reading that.
Oh, there was no recommendation, it was just we got information on what had happened out there.
My advice is, yeah, I know you didn't vote, you decided not to take action, but it was an agenda item, I was given a card, but it must be relevant to the...
I missed that last statement.
Stan Johnston, professional engineer. I was there at the PNC meeting when the person spoke, Dwight Severs, okay? And, and then I spoke after he spoke, and I, I said to them, the PNC, I said, this is an important issue, and they voted to, to bring it to council. And I would make a suggestion on this, is that it sounds like Brad has already done this, is to contact Honeycotton, and he probably has, because, oh, there he is.
Oh, God. That's almost scary.
So it sounds, it sounds like it's on its way for, for resolution, and thank you for looking into it, and hopefully you'll look into some other items that other people bring up. Thank you.
Here, can you call other names and see if they walk in? That was crazy. Thank you. We have nothing else we need to do with that. City manager?
Requests.
Can we skip? No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Petitions or requests? Yeah, good call.
Stan Johnson, 860 Point Setta Avenue. I've sent, sent an email to city manager saying, please let me know what you've told the elder of my church, because I don't know what's going on. One of the elders was approached by a police officer, said that, don't you stand that the police officer told me that now because of me is the city council and public meetings have two armed police officers because of you? And I said, I didn't know that. And he said, didn't you know that? I'm saying, I didn't know. So I want, it appears that the city is spending a lot of money because of me, a lot of money. I'm having armed police officers, two armed police officers at, at public meetings. I'm not sure if it's necessary, but you might want to consider suing me. You might want to consider suing me for defamation of character, for example, for, Sean Stauffer, Brad Parrish, and our city manager. Maybe you can sue me. In fact, is, is that I, I talked with Kathleen Burson, who was a former city council member, and she was, considered she was being harassed by someone who said a number of things about her that weren't untrue. And so the, the city attorney at that time wrote a letter to that person, and it stopped, stopped completely. So maybe if you were to sue me or something like that for defamation of character of our good and loyal citizens or staff members, of course, if you, if you're, if you're suing, suing me and, and I'm telling the truth, it's going to backfire on you. And that, I believe, is the reason why you do not sue me, because I'm telling you the truth and our city manager is doing what? He's telling you lies. And our generations, our leg, the legacy of this council is going to be that you lived on lies. That's what your legacy is going to be, because you will not sue me because you know I'm trailing the truth. And you sue me and you'll lose. I'm telling you the truth, and when I say, for example, this is a shyster, he's a con artist, he's a fraudster, and I use those words, I'm not, I'm not accusing him of being that. I know from my personal experience that that is, that he is a shyster, a con artist, no good, that's, that's leading us downhill, it's costing us millions of dollars. This is what our city manager's doing. He's no good. He's no good for us, you need to get rid of him. Sue me. Sue me for defamation of character. The guy's a crook. I pray for him too, also.
Yeah, there you go.
Need to know that. All right?
All right.
Thank you.
No, stay there. All right, so now, you've talked about city manager.
Yes, sir.
You can't do that anymore by the rule, read the speaking rules.
Oh, I don't think so. City manager's involved in a number of things.
You're done with that. Second thing is, I can't remember for sure, but when I got here in 2016, I believe we already had the officers. And the second thing is, I don't think there's a city council meeting going on where there's just no school board meetings going on, there's no city council meetings going on that I know of where you don't have law enforcement. No, I'm not asking anything, we're good. We'll get back together.
Thank you.
All right, petitions or requests?
Hi, my name's Derek Bursh, City of Titusville. I am requesting a change in city code, section 2852, the one that states the, the definition of marijuana. We recently obtained our license to cultivate hemp, and by the city code, it groups in hemp and marijuana together, so we're requesting that we change the code from genus cannabis to just marijuana.
That's probably over my head. City attorney, can you help explain that to me? What's the, what's the...
Well, we have a, we have a code that prohibits the cultivation of marijuana, which is defined as any part of the marijuana plant. And it sounds like he wants to separate hemp from that to allow him to cultivate or sell hemp, which is part of marijuana plant, which would require a code change.
Currently, by the definition that you guys have for cultivation, it says planting, growing, harvesting, drying, processing, or storage of one or more marijuana plants or any part thereof, we allow CBD in the city. CBD is a part of hemp, which is a part thereof, the plant. In order to sell it, you have to store it. So any current business now that has CBD is out of, is out of, it's in violation of the city code, so.
And this one is a little bit out of left field for me. It's been a while. We've had, what year did we pass the medical marijuana? It was like...
It's been a few, maybe four, four years ago?
Yeah.
It's been a while. And that took like five meetings and table and discuss and table and investigate and table, and now I'm not sure, because I can tell you that the word "medical" is the only reason I voted for it at that time. Medical marijuana. As a longtime educator, I've certainly had my run-ins with the marijuana issue on campuses. So that being said, I'm always hesitant to expand anything with marijuana. I was, it, it, it was a long, ultimately, I voted for medical marijuana at the dispensaries, and I think that it's done a lot of good. I haven't heard that we've had any issues other, but I always am concerned when we start to expand the, the ability to get hemp or, and I don't understand it real well. So with that, I'm going to defer to member Nelson.
Well, I thought about it this afternoon, because I had understood you might be here, might be asking that, and I thought, you know, we only have a limited amount of property within the city limits, and I'm like, do I want to put agricultural in there too? And I thought, no. For me, it's, for me, it's a no. You know, I wouldn't put a farm in the middle of the city, I wouldn't put a marijuana patch in the middle of the city either.
So is this a growing thing? You'd be growing?
We're actually, we're proposing to grow inside, so it wouldn't be, we wouldn't be taking up any other land or anything, it'd be actual inside.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't be crazy about growing tomatoes inside. It's just, to me, it's the city, city is for people, and out in the county, we have county areas, and that's more appropriate.
I'd be less ingenuous, if I, genuine, if I didn't say that it had to do with me with the marijuana hemp aspect. I realized what a hot topic that was previously, and we, we moved on the medical marijuana that could be prescribed by doctors, and this seems to take it another step. Member Stokoe?
Yeah, I was just going to echo what you guys were saying. This, I was here when we were going back and forth with this, and we ultimately did, I, I think I voted against it, to be honest, but I think...
It was a 3-2.
It was, yeah, it was the majority wanted it, and it was...
3-2.
It was for the medical reasons, and I think at that time, we were very intentional about allowing it, but specifically, I think prohibiting the growing or cultivating of it. So I would not be in favor of it at this time.
Vice Mayor?
My thoughts on it is probably in alignment with everyone else. I wasn't here for the last engagement about all of this, but, but I do have a background in dealing with stopping marijuana from coming into this country. And my thoughts then are the same thoughts that I have now, and I'm not in favor of anything in dealing with growing or, you know, my wife's a nurse, and medical marijuana is, is, has been proven to help individual. My brother had cancer, and, and I, and I, he'd share with me that, how it helped him, so that, but if any farther than that, at this particular point, and properly through the duration, duration of my tour, I would not be in favor of that.
I think what I'm hearing is, A, we're, we're very hesitant. We had a 3-2 vote for medical marijuana dispensaries, and that really, obviously, with 3-2 could have gone either way, we could have been without dispensaries. I don't regret doing that, but I'm always concerned about that and watching that. I would simply say that right now, I'm, I haven't heard from you, member Cole, I'm assuming you're...
You know, basically, I, I don't have a full understanding of what we're talking about here, because I guess, I don't know the difference between, I mean, is it a marijuana plant and you separate the hemp and you separate the THC and the... I, I don't have enough information to make an informed decision.
The hemp plant has no, well, it has less than 3% THC in it.
So is it a different seed?
It's a different seed, different strand. Currently, like I said before, we're, we're selling CBD throughout the city, and the hemp plant that we're growing is to produce CBD. That's what they use to make the CBD is the hemp plant. So it has no THC, no psychoactive components of it, so it's totally different from marijuana.
What would you do with it? What does, and I'm, I'm a little bit like, I'm a lot like member Cole.
We'll make CBD oils and ointments and stuff that we're currently selling throughout the city now.
At this, at this point, I'm, I'm a no for lots of reasons, and having been through the previous discussion where it was medical marijuana dispensaries, and that was hot. This is certainly something I'm not opposed to looking into on my own and get to, because you can tell, I'm not going to lie, I don't totally understand it, but I do know that the term hemp and marijuana, and let's expand and let's do more and change the code, I, I don't want to do all that, but I may sit with city attorney on my own. I'm not saying that this is, hey, we're moving that direction. I'm not saying we're moving that direction, but I would like to inform myself more, even if I didn't say this, I would have done it anyway, see exactly what's going on with this. So perhaps at a later time, you can stand back up there and see where we're at, but at this point, I think it's a 5-0, we don't want to move in that direction right now, and it's certainly a very professional presentation, very informative, and certainly, there's a lot to inform more. But with that said, I would definitely think that we're not wanting to make that kind of move at this time. That was, that's a lot of prepping in my own head to even think about that, but as you can tell, I can't give a, I can't give a report on it, that's for sure. So with that, I think we're going to, at the very least, back up and say, let's, you know, let's move forward, and I don't want to say think about it, because I'm not going to speak for anybody else, but I do want to know more about it. And if I do my YouTube investigation, that's where I do all my investigations, I'll at least understand a little bit more what you're talking about. Because I know there's hemp oil out there. I know that, and quite honestly, though, some athletes were disqualified for that, and I, I don't think that was right, but, so, so there are some issues on both sides. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you so much for your... We are still in petitions or requests. You guys know? Later? Okay, no more petitions or requests? All right, city manager?
On to consent. Council, we have consent agenda items A through N. Council, do you have any questions of staff for consent agendas?
I see none. Anybody? Member Stokoe, you good?
Council, do you want to pull any of the consent agenda items A through N?
I see none.
City clerk, are there any cards for consent agenda items A through N?
Yes, we have one individual that has signed up for eight items and another individual for two items.
Mayor, with your permission, I'll read the titles for the record. Consent agenda item 8A, authorize to execute work order for PLC replacement and engineering programmable services at the Osprey Water Recreation Facility. Consent agenda item 8B, approve the purchase of the MDS radios for the SCADA telemetry update project. Consent agenda item 8C, approve advisability to explore options for new financing options for capital vehicles and equipment. Consent agenda item 8D, approve and appropriate the forfeiture funds for sole source purchase of live scan system. Consent agenda item 8E, accept the FY '23 Victims of Crime Grant Award. Consent agenda item 8F, approve the work order for public outreach services for Septic to Sewer Project. Consent agenda item 8G, authorize and approve a budget amendment to cover the outside council legal fees. Consent agenda item 8H, approve Resolution 1-2023 and Resolution Number 2-2023 State Housing Initiative Partnership, Ship Housing Initiative in the Surplus Property List Resolution. Consent agenda item 8I, authorize the expenditure of $1,000 for car seat donation out of the restricted account and purchase 12 child passenger seats. Consent agenda item 8J, approve the successor agreement between the IAF Local 2445 and the City of Titusville. Consent agenda item 8K, approve the selection committee's final rankings for continuing consultant, selection committee rankings, contract award RFQ Number 23Q006, continuing consultant A&E services, water resources utility services, and public works projects. Consent agenda item 8L, approve the award bid for traffic signaling improvements. Consent agenda item 8M, approve the award for bid Number 23B004TB for utility billing, printing, and mailing services. Consent agenda item 8N, approve the purchase of a replacement vehicle for customer service.
Thank you very much. Council, any comments of any of those? I see none. City clerk, could you call the one who had two items?
Yes, Tony Shifalo would like to speak on item C and item G. Would you like to give her six minutes or...
No, no, I made a mistake with C. I was talking about the other, another agenda item.
Okay, so you just want the one item?
Just tell us what you're doing when you get there, Mr. Shifalo.
I want to speak about G.
G.
Outside legal funds.
Amendment cover outside council, lady. Thank you.
Tony Shifalo, Tropic Street. And I'm here because I was very curious about this item, $50,000 to be removed, and I don't know how to read the account numbers and look it up, and I'm wondering which account, what account is the $50,000 to be moved from, to be put into the city attorney's professional legal fees account to cover legal fees and costs for outside council? As a taxpayer, I'd like to know what my tax dollars are going for. Could you tell me what account that's coming from?
Out of the unrestricted account.
Tell me again?
Out of the unrestricted account.
Unrestricted account. And my comment as a taxpayer would be, wouldn't that, I know that a portion of that $50,000 is going to pay the Tallahassee lawyer that has been hired to stop the Clean Water Initiative that was passed on the ballot by 82% of the voting voters, and you guys decided you would stonewall it, and as a taxpayer, I just want to know how much of my tax dollars is going, you know, what percentage of that $50,000 is going to that Tallahassee lawyer, and why can't our own attorney, why do we retain city attorneys to do city business? Why couldn't he have read the initiative and seen that it, it does comply with the Florida law that's trying to stop local governments from having, say, over their environment? And I just wanted to point out, before I came to city council tonight on a positive note, the governor of the state has allocated a million dollars to the Indian River Lagoon restoration and saving, and I would like to see us work to grab as much of that as we can, because the North Titusville Indian River Lagoon area is in the most critical condition, and we really need help. Thank you.
Mr. Shifalo, real quick, and I'm just going to say this, and when you said that we have obtained, attained a lawyer in Tallahassee to stop the passage of the vote, however you said that.
I did say that.
Certainly, it's my feeling and it's my, I feel our obligation, we have a lawyer to make sure it's constitutional, and I've said all along, if he comes back and says, hey, this is constitutional. The problem came along a long time ago when it looks like it looked in... like it looked an awful lot, and we talked about this with Pat House.
Yeah, we've had that.
It looked an awful lot like the Orange County one that got knocked out. I know there's still some litigation going on with that. So there's certainly in my mind, my time's up.
Yep, yeah.
Certainly, certainly in my mind, we've never obtained a lawyer to stop anything. We need to know that it's legal before we can put it into our, what's the word I'm looking for?
Charter.
Exactly, in our charter. And that's really all it is. We have to make, we needed to get it on the ballot, we did. We need to make sure that it's legal and constitutional. That's all we need to do. Thank you for everything.
Well, may I just have, have a second to reply that our attorneys, when we crafted that petition and that amendment, made sure that it did comply with the Florida law, and I don't see why it's taking, you know, like $50,000 to have another lawyer, why is it taking so long? You know, this is going on a long time since November.
Thank you.
Can I add to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hey, Tony?
Yes?
That $50,000 is not specifically for that lawsuit, but the problem was, and I talked to several people, I said, you've got some language in there that's bad. And then when we read further, the statute, the Florida statute, which really has their thumb on top of it, says, "You shall not come up with anything that challenges our laws." So we're sort of like between a rock and a hard place. Yeah, and so, you know, people are, people are yelling and saying, oh gee, you want to stop it? No, but we want to make sure it's right.
We have no choice but to make sure it's right.
It's the perception, though.
Yeah, it is.
Some people.
And I must admit, I know, I know that perception.
Tony.
So, I can't control perception, so we'll go from there. I bet the next guy stands. Stan, come on up.
Stan Johnson, 860 Point Set Avenue, and I'm speaking as a professional engineer on, on these particular items.
Tell, eight of them?
Eight of them, and just a quick one with, follow-up to Tony, because I have a card for that, and that has to do with this.
That is G.
Right, clean water. So I'm, I'm not gonna go much into that, but I, I'm concerned about spending of money for what the city is doing, and I'm opposed to items 8A, B, and F because of some other, some serious issues with Mr. Stauffer. And those 8A, B, and F have all to do with Mr. Stauffer's, I could be wrong, but I believe they all, all are, and his supervisory position directive of water resources. And I, I mention that because I just sent him a, for, for many reasons. One reason, I just sent him an email about the boiled water alert, why we didn't have a boiled water alert. This last time we had coliform detected in our well water. He doesn't respond. We have a, a false report from Mr. Stauffer also regarding this issue right here. He's saying that the, the water, sewage water was stopped into the river on December the 19th. This is dated December the 22nd, and this is photos were taken when sewage is flowing wildly, wildly into the river, December 22nd. This is, I got December 22nd, signed by me, signed and sealed by me. So this was, this was a sign that was posted, and Mr. Stauffer denies it. He's filing a false report. And I just showed, told you before, is that, that there's a Florida statute, which I'll go over with you real quickly, Florida 838.022, and this also applies to our shyster, city manager. It says...
Hold up, hold up, stop the clock, stop the clock.
Yes, sir.
We're gonna try to stand by that, that we, you legally can't talk about him again the rest of the meeting.
I believe that I can.
No, you can't.
He's, he's...
Whoa, 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 whoa. We can read it again, but you can only say one thing one time. So let's just try to stay away from that and, you know what I mean? All right, go.
No, I, 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 I got freedom of speech, I believe, and in this, this case...
And there are rules to that speech.
And, and in other words, Mr. Stauffer, this Mr. Shyster here is, is involved with numerous things on this agenda, and for me, for you to restrict me from speaking, speaking because I, I've used his word before, used his name before, that's not correct. And you should be fair to me.
Speaking nicely.
You, you should be fair to me, is that, for example, you just said that, that, that I'm wrong and about this two armed, two armed police officers. You said I was wrong, as far as you know. But the thing is, here's what it is. What I want Dan Diesel to do is I want him to check with Elder Steve Yukes of Park Avenue Baptist Church, who told me this. So you can contact Pa, Elder Steve Yukes, and he's the one who told me about the two police officers, and he was told by a police officer. So please check with him about that.
I don't know about Steve Yukes and, and we're discussing this.
Well, it was just last month. Well, he's the pastor also.
If you went to a school board meeting today, would there be security? If you went to Coco's meeting right now too, if Coco was meeting, I'm sure they have security.
Do they have two police, armed police officers?
I have no idea, but it's not out of course.
Do they have two armed police officers?
Go ahead, I don't take your time.
They have this one.
I don't take your time.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for sharing with me. You're a good guy.
You kill him.
This is, this is one of the coaches of one state championship.
State championship, yes, indeed. I can say that one time, can't I?
One time.
Okay. Go Tigers. All right. So Mr. Stauffer specifically, on these three items I'm talking about, he's, I talked about, mentioned about the boiled water alert. I missed, I mentioned about the false reporting, and so I went, I was going into, I want to read this to you, because I'm sorry that your attorney, Nelson's not here, but here, here's what I'm reading to you. Here it says, Florida Statute 838, "It is unlawful for a public servant or public contractor," that's you guys, public servants, "to knowingly and intentionally obtain a benefit for any person to cause." Okay, you're not getting any benefit. "Or, or to cause unlawful harm to another." Now, what we have in this particular case is we have a bunch of people that were injured by this. That's harm, that's harm, that's harm. In other words, right now, we're having Mr. Stauffer, and you guys approve of this guy, and false reports, and it's causing harm. And it says, 1A, it says falsifying or causing another person to falsify any official record or official document. That's exactly what you've guys done. And furthermore, it says, under number three, it says, "Any person who violates this section commits a felony."
Stop the clock, real quick, because a true question. I thought we lost the clock for a second.
Okay, yes, sir.
What number are you talking about here?
I'm talking about...
What number?
A.
A?
8A, 8B, and 8F.
And that was part of that?
Those are opposed, yes.
All right, so let's...
8B and F. Yes, sir.
Go.
All right, thank you, thank you. I wanted to clarify. So, so I read to you Florida statutes, parts of Florida statutes, 838, but let me go to another Florida statute. Jolene, you might want to write that down, Florida Statute 838.022, and now we have Florida Statute 918.13, and Mr. Brew might want to write that down too. It says tampering with or fabricating physical evidence.
Four minutes.
Make present or use any record, document, or thing knowing it to be false. That's B, 1B. No, it says, says, one, no, no person knowing, knowing that blank, 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 it's been, shall make present or use any record, document, or thing knowing it to be false. And then 918.13-2, it says, "Any person who violates any provisions of this section should be guilty of a..." Felony. 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 Okay. So that's what it appears that Mr. Stauffer is guilty of, and it seems that he's brought you into it because you've got to also, except for Mr. Cole, because you weren't here when it happened. You're still a good guy.
Thank you.
So, so the, Consent Order 21-0113 was approved by council, which is a false report. I got photos, other people got photos, we got all kinds of witnesses, everything like that. Just never, it, it was, and also October 11th and October 25th, city manager said, "Didn't happen, didn't happen. Oh, my golly, didn't happen." So anyhow, so it appears that you guys are involved in something pretty serious, just like, what was it? That city in Michigan that had the, all the lead in the water, and people just kept lying about that. So, but, but Mr. Stauffer has done other things, other things. About the water tower. Remember the water towers that were taken down? Remember those water towers? Those are expensive towers, they're taken down. And he said he had all these calculations. Hmm, well, he didn't have a calculation for the one on South Street. And I was offered, you know, give him, give him about $2,500 or something like that, and then he'll do the calculations. Well, the problem is, I see another problem is, how much were those towers taken down, knowing that the city is expanding and using more water, more areas? I really have doubts, because it is very difficult to replace, to my knowledge, that's my knowledge, a water tower. How in the world can you replace a water tower? Because it's got all the energy there, it's got, it's got the volume and energy, and you just, what you're gonna do is you're gonna take it out of the system. So I don't know how in the world you, you, they took them out of the system. That was one of the things. Also, this guy, Mr. Stauffer, would not answer. National, national newspaper, The Guardian. What does The Guardian say? What does The Guardian say? Right here. Yes. Because The Guardian says 176 parts per trillion tested in the city of Tidesville, of PFAS. Do you know what Mr. Stauffer had to say about that? That was on national headlines. So what did, what did Mr. Stauffer had to say about it? Nothing, nothing. It was never brought, brought forward. The only place you saw it was right here, and from Stan Johnson and The Guardian. This is a surprise. So this is driving some people nuts, like people at TEC. What in the world is the city doing? I mean, why do we have people lead us who are dishonest, complete dishonesty? So that's another one. So the, I also ran into Mr. Stauffer with stormwater, when he is in charge of stormwater, and he was, he disregarded what I was talking about, the Baker subdivision.
Thank you very much. Time is up.
May I have another five minutes?
Five minutes?
I see none.
Okay.
All right. Since Vice Mayor just took a break, I'm going to go ahead and take a two-minute recess, and we'll come back and vote. I wasn't very good.
All right, meeting back in order. Thank you for the brief break. I need a motion to, unless there's any comment. I need a motion on consent agenda.
Move to approve items on the consent agenda, 8A through 8, I believe it was N, including the two resolutions. There are two resolutions in there on 8.
Second?
I have a motion by Member Nelson, a second by Member Cole. Roll call, vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Let's hear it, Robinson.
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Senator Nelson?
Yes.
Consent Agenda passes unanimously. City Manager?
On to Agenda Item 9A, which is the second reading of ordinance Number 4-2023 in your public hearing. The city attorney will read the ordinance for the record.
Ordinance Number 4, 2023, in ordinance of the City of Tidesville, Florida, amending Chapter 2 Administration, Article 2 City Council, Section 2-29, execution of certain legal instruments, amending Article 4 Officers and Employees, Section 2-87, budget preparation and administration, amending Article 5 Financial Matters, Division 2 Local Preference Purchasing, Section 2-181, purchases restricted. To clarify and provide uniform language, granting additional authority to the city manager related to purchase orders and contracts, and increase the bidding threshold and providing for an effective date.
Staff is in the process of updating the city's purchasing manual as part of the review and procedures and policies accepted in other municipalities and local agencies. Staff is requesting a change to the current authority level of the city manager as it relates to purchasing orders and contracts. Currently, the code establishes the city manager's approval authority at, at or not greater than $15,000, which was effective 24 August 2004. This approval authority threshold establishes the city's formal bid threshold. A change in the code from this amount to an amount not greater than $25,000 would ensure consistency with the surrounding communities. A comparison of the city offices located around central Florida and Brevard County are included in your packet. The new threshold will put the city more in line with peer cities across central Florida and Brevard County, while the bid threshold will not change, the purchasing guidelines and applicable city policies will remain the same.
Thank you. I will just simply add to that, that as you compare other cities and their threshold for city manager, we are way, way behind and still are, even when we pass this, if we pass this. So with that said, is there anything else anybody wants to say on that? Okay, cards, please?
One card, it's Stan Johnson.
Stan, you haven't passed on any of them today.
Beg your pardon?
You haven't passed on any of them. Sometimes...
Yes, I have. I have passed on numerous...
All right, meeting back in order. Thank you for the brief break. I need a motion. To, unless there's any comment, I need a motion on consent agenda.
Move to approve items on the consent agenda, eight, A through eight, I believe it was, N, including the two resolutions. There are two resolutions in there on age.
Second.
I have a motion by Member Nelson, a second by Member Cole. Roll call, vote. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Consent agenda passes unanimously. City manager.
Onto Agenda Item nine A, which is the second reading of Ordinance Number four dash twenty-twenty-three in your public hearing. The city attorney will read the ordinance for the record.
Ordinance Number four, twenty-twenty-three, in ordinance of the city of Tiesville, Florida, amending Chapter Two Administration, Article Two, City Council, Section two dash twenty-nine, execution of certain legal instruments. Amending Article Four, Officers and Employees, Section two dash eighty-seven, budget preparation and administration. Amending Article Five, Financial Matters, Division Two, Local Preference Purchasing, Section two dash one eighty-one, purchases restricted. To clarify and provide uniform language, granting additional authority to the city manager related to purchase orders and contracts, and increase the bidding threshold and providing for an effective date.
Staff is in the process of updating the city's purchasing manuals, part of the review and procedures and policies accepted in other municipalities and local agencies. Staff is requesting a change to the current authority level of the city manager as it relates to purchasing orders and contracts. Currently, the code establishes the city manager's approval authority at, at or not greater than fifteen thousand, which was effective twenty-four August, two thousand and four. This approval authority threshold establishes the city's formal bid threshold. A change in the code from this amount to an amount not greater than twenty-five thousand would ensure consistency with the surrounding communities. A comparison of the city offices located around central Florida and Brevard County are included in your packet. The new threshold will put the city more in line with peer cities across central Florida and Brevard County. While the bid threshold will not change, the purchasing guidelines and applicable city policies will remain the same.
Thank you. I will just simply add to that, that as you compare other cities and their threshold for city manager, we are way, way behind and still are, even when we pass this, if we pass this. So with that said, is there anything else anybody wants to say on that? Okay, cards, please.
One card. It's Stan Johnston.
Stan, you haven't passed on any of them today.
Beg your pardon?
You haven't passed on any of them.
Yes, I have. I have passed on numerous things, under consent agenda and so forth, I have. Please don't start the clock yet.
All right, let's go. Go ahead. Start the clock.
Start the clock. Three o'clock, three minutes.
Three o'clock.
Three minutes. Three minutes.
You don't have to.
There you go. Thank you. All right, Stan Johnston, eight sixty Point Set Avenue. I put a card in for this, but neither, but actually, I'm opposed to this. And I'm not allowed to say anything about the city manager, but in this thing, it's upping his fifteen thousand to about twenty-five thousand, his, his ability to do that. And right now, with some words that I've said that you don't like to be heard, don't like to be heard, but that he's, he's not, let's see, responsible. And you guys are liable for his, seems like somebody should be liable for his behavior. He shouldn't be rewarded for dishonesty. So that's what you guys are doing. And this would, this would further, further his responsibility and ability to be more dishonest, which he's already, as far as I can see, has exceeded his capacity for that. And it's open and notorious. So I'm not in favor of, of giving him more responsibility because he's, you know what I said. And without saying it, but he's, that's what he is, and maybe you should just sue me for defamation of character, which I'm afraid I'm telling the truth. And I wish some people who are listening to this would, would think about what he's doing. Because he's violating a lot of laws. And it's even the one that water flows downhill. So as an engineer, I'm saying he's, he's no good for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card. All right, council, any comments, questions? Vice mayor?
Yeah, I make the motion.
Please do.
Of ordinance Number four dash two zero two three, amending the Code of Ordinances, Section two dash two nine, two dash eighty-seven, and two dash one eight one. And this is the second reading of this ordinance.
Was that a motion to approve? Yes. Well, I shouldn't say, you have to say that. Was that a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion to approve. I have a motion to approve by Vice Mayor, a second by Member Nelson. Roll call, vote. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. City manager.
Onto Item ten B, which is Ordinance Number five, twenty-twenty-three, Stormwater Technical Manual Ordinance. This is the first reading. City attorney will read for the record.
Ordinance Number five, twenty-twenty-three, in ordinance of the city of Tiesville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances, by amending Chapter thirty-seven definitions, Section thirty-seven dash one definitions, to amend the definition of legal positive outfalls. Amending Chapter thirty, Development Standards, Sections thirty dash two oh seven, Area of Critical Concern Performance, by amending retention and discharge requirements for all development sites, and thirty dash two oh eight, Pervious Pavement Standards in the Area of Critical Concern, to include pervious pavement standards for development outside of the area of critical concern, and amending references for internal consistency. And amending Section seven, Stormwater Management Technical Manual, by amending Section seven point four, Stormwater Management Design Criteria, relating to legal positive outfalls, pollutant discharge, pond design, model, and stormwater design criteria, and low-impact development, providing for grandfather provisions, severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, effective date, and incorporation into the code.
This is the first reading. The public hearing is scheduled for your regular meeting on twenty-four January at six thirty. The Plaine and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance on four January twenty-twenty-three and recommended approval. Mr. Parrish and KB are here to answer any questions that you may have on this first reading.
Counsel, any questions for our staff? Either one, Mr. Parrish, in, in my mind, just to clear up in my head, this, this ordinance is gonna do what for us?
It cleans up some items and some requirements in our stormwater regulations. Kind of, for example, it gives a better definition of what a legal positive outfall. It also addresses specifically when a one-hundred-year versus a twenty-five-year design requirement is gonna be required. It also looks at, it does strengthen some of our requirements. For example, it does require now, it prohibits wet ponds in our area of critical concern. That's our well-filled areas. So those are the highlights. KB is also here to maybe add anything else, if there's anything that's relevant. We'll try and answer your questions.
I don't know if we have a lot of questions. I think it's, it really just comes down to needing to be cleaned up. And I don't think that gets real complicated, but I thought getting you to kind of give us that, that's what you're basically doing. You're cleaning it up and has a couple of statements in there that need to be in there that weren't.
It, well, like I said, there's some things that are strengthening. We're strengthening some of the language in here. So it is a little bit tighter regulation.
Okay. KB, anyone to add?
Yes, also removing some conflicts. For example, in the ACC, it allowed using the ten-year, twenty-four-hour storm, but that was actually in conflict with our comp plan.
Very good.
Which states that the minimum storm should be the twenty-five-year storm.
Very good. Thank you guys for moving in that direction. Counsel, any questions? I see none. Cards?
One card. We have Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, eight sixty Point Set Avenue. For many years, as an engineer, I did dry retention ponds in the city and in Brevard County. And at that time, the requirements were, is that no dry retention pond shall be deeper than two feet, two feet deep. It appears that the city has removed that now, and for example, at SNJ Oaks, the design is for over four feet, a dry retention pond. And of course, some little children, even four feet is pretty deep. So you have a retention pond that's four feet. And now it says here in this new, new change, change, it says that we'll, well, it says one-half of a foot of freedom shall be required above the overflow elevation. Well, there's no, in this particular one, at SNJ Oaks, it doesn't have that. Doesn't have that. It'd be four and a half feet. So it appears to me, from the ethical concerns of, of a dry retention pond, when I was doing dry ponds, that the change from two feet to four feet and over four and a, like, we're getting to four and a half feet, is that's a drowning hazard. And so that's what you're, you're voting on, this drowning hazard also. So although it sounds like it's already in, in operation, this, with, but it's, I haven't designed a dry pond for, for years. So I consider that as, as a, as a problem. And I have been concerned that, that our planning department has not been using the Stormwater Management Plan, that it's called Stormwater Management Plan of Greater Tiesville, in the review of their projects such as rezoning and so forth, which they should be able to just turn to it and look at the, look at the Stormwater Master Plan. Because it includes a lot of player areas even outside of city limits. But the city hasn't been doing it. So I think that in addition to this ordinance, is that you need to look at what is going on with, with the city planning department and that the use of your Stormwater Management Plan and this violation of city codes and violation of what I just called about, water flows downhill, there's all these dams with no compensatory storage. All these dams, all the dams that I know of. No compensatory storage, violation of laws. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other cards? All right, counsel, any comments? I see none. City attorney, city's manager.
Onto Item ten C, which is Ordinance Number six, twenty-twenty-three, Modifications to Risk Management Program, Definitions, Payment of Claims, Claim Settlements, and Additional Risk Sections of the Ordinance. City attorney will read for the record, six, twenty-twenty-three.
Ordinance Number six, twenty-twenty-three, in ordinance of the city of Tiesville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances, by amending Chapter two, Article seven, Risk Management Program, to clarify expenses to be paid from the self-insured loss fund and to amend the threshold amount for settlement of claims by city manager or designee, by amending Section two dash two two nine, Definitions, Section two dash two thirty-one, Expenses and Costs to Be Approved and Paid From Fund, Section two dash two thirty-five, Claims Settlement Authority, and Section two dash two thirty-nine, Additional Risk, providing for severability, providing for incorporation into the code, and providing for an effective date.
This is the first reading. The second reading and public hearing is scheduled for your regular city council meeting on twenty-four January twenty-three at six thirty. And staff is available to answer questions that you may have.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions on ten C for staff? I see none at this time. Cards, please?
One card. Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston. And this is, oh my goodness, which number is this?
Ten C.
Ten C. Okay, here's what, history about what's going on here is that a few years ago, I was having problems, and I still have the problems with what the city is doing as far as, for example, the sewage spills and all this so forth, misrepresenting the presentation and so forth. So I contacted Risk Management, and I contacted them, and I said, I want to know your insurance company information, send them this information. And I didn't get any information, but I found some information anyways. And it wasn't long after that I sent this information into an insurance provider, is that the risk manager left. So we have a new risk manager. I don't know, he's been new here for a while. And so I'm sending him information also about what the city is doing and what's the city's liability is. And I'm also sending him this issue about felonies, your Florida statutes, eight thirty-eight and, and the nine-something. So, nine eighteen. And so risk management is in, is in a situation, I don't know what they can do if, if you're listening to risk management, whether risk management is, is listening at all to what I have provided to the risk manager. I don't know if this manager is here or not. I don't remember his name right now. But you got a pickle. You got a pickle, and it might blow up in your face. And will I have any sympathy for you? No, I won't. I won't have any sympathy for you. You might deserve what you get. And that's what you got right there. So regarding this, you may have some more claims, but there's gonna be a legacy here. You guys are establishing legacy. The legacy is, is that when I tell you some things and somebody else tells you things, is that there's a difference. I'm telling the truth, and some people are not telling the truth. And although, although, if you remember, when the guy came up to be for, for being hired by the city, he said, he said this, he said, I, I go by the golden rule, do unto others what you'd have done unto you. He's not doing that. He's not doing that. I know that he wouldn't put his grandchildren out there and have them being sprayed by sewage. Wouldn't do it. Neither would any of you. And I told Mrs. Nelson, I mean, she, she has all these girls and so forth, girl clubs. She wouldn't take them out there to have them being sprayed by sewage. Sure, she wouldn't. Do unto others. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other cards? Any comments from counsel? I see none. City manager.
Onto New Business, which is Item twelve A, Advisibility for Conditional Use Permit Requirements for Single Family Residential in Open Space and Recreational O R Zoning Districts and Wetland Conservation Area Overlay. Staff is seeking direction from city council as to removing the C U P requirements for single-family residents in the O R zoning district and the water conservation area overlay by changing the zoning and the overlay requirements in Chapters twenty-eight and twenty-nine of the code. Relevant sections of the code are enclosed in city council's packet for review. Additional sections may be reviewed based on the direction of council's guidance, and Mr. Parrish is here to get your guidance.
And again, I'll start off with, can you give us a summary of what this really means to us, what we're looking at, and how you feel about it?
During the mediation, we had with the rights, legal counsel, we, there were two proposals that they submitted to us for council's consideration, and that report was given to you earlier in December. One of the options included potential for rezoning a portion of their property. So they have the option, they wanted the option of submitting an application to rezone a portion of the property. We didn't commit to what our decision would be, our recommendation would be on that. We have to evaluate whatever petition they give to us. But part of that second option also included removing the C U P or the public hearing requirement for a single-family residential unit in the open space and recreation zoning district. And staff had no objection to that. In fact, we recommended it. We looked at other uses that are listed for requirements of the C U P in our code. We even looked at the county. We just don't see the reason for having a public hearing for a single-family home in the O R zoning district. They would just have to meet all the other requirements of any other single-family home, whether it's platted or not. So that's where, that's our position on that, and we'd like some advisability from, or direction from city council as to how far we should go with that. We've identified several sections in the code that are relevant, that would have to be evaluated. There may be others. So this advisability would have to allow us to look at everything to see what the impact would be. The direction could be limited. It could be, could say that we will remove the C U P requirement, but maybe have some limitations. So if you recall, in our zoning table, we have list of uses. They're listed either in four ways. One is P, which is permitted. It's permitted use by right. If it's an L, it means it's permitted, but it may be some limitations or conditions associated with it. The letter C you see in that table will see, it means it has to, it's permitted, but it has to have a public hearing before you first. And if it's not listed at all, if there's nothing inside that zoning, that, that chart, you don't see a letter, it's a prohibited use. So right now, a single-family home is required to have a conditional use, public hearing in the O R zoning. We're recommending to change that to either permitted or with some limitations.
Member Nelson?
So, correct me if I'm wrong. So a bed and breakfast is a limited use or is just?
Limited.
Limited.
Correct, limited.
Okay. And then a residence is a C U P?
Correct.
And what are the limitations for the bed and breakfast?
If you give me one moment, I can bring that up for you. The attorney said you have to have a bed and a breakfast as a condition.
And it has to have biscuits.
Yeah.
Hot biscuits with honey.
So in Section twenty-eight dash one oh one, it states that a bed and breakfast is a limited use in several zoning districts and is a conditional use in others. So as a limited use in the O R zoning district, it says that it shall be limited to the density limitation of the zoning classification where an existing single-family home, house is being utilized as a bed and breakfast or boarding facility. And the gas accommodations shall not exceed fifty percent of the floor area of the principal's residence. That's the first condition. It looks like there are two, three, four, five, six, seven more conditions associated with it. So there's even height limitations, shall have a occupational license, no closer than five hundred feet from another bed and breakfast or even in the same zoning. So there's several conditions.
So that makes sense. To me, having a C U P for a residence, when you can only have one residence for five acres, doesn't necessarily make sense. But I was wondering if there's any limitations that may be appropriate.
That's something we could look at. There is one section of the code that talks about a wetland overlay. And if you remember,
Right.
Our code has zoning districts, and on top of that, there may be overlays that are more restrictive or may be more flexible depending. Well, there's a wetland overlay that states that a single-family home is required to have a single, a conditional use permit. It also identifies other uses, and you're supposed to evaluate it for its impact for water use areas and impacts to wetlands specifically. It gets, there's more additional criteria supposed to address in addition to our standard conditional use permit criteria.
So even if we were to remove the C U P because of the overlay, we still might have to have a C U P?
Right. So that's why we're suggesting, we've identified all the locations that we could find a requirement for C U P for single-family homes. We'd like to look at all that. Our stand, our, our position is that we don't see the need for a public hearing for a single-family home. We can certainly understand there's certain limitations that you want to include, and we can certainly explore that.
It would be easier to have limitations. It would be easier to have limitations on it as opposed to a CUP.
It would not require an advertised public hearing process, that's true.
Okay, that would be my thought, um, that maybe we look at it and see if it's something we want to do. And I'm not saying I would be for it or against it, it's just sort of, let's look at it and see what, what we think might, might be changed.
I would ask for some direction. So we can certainly compare other jurisdictions, you know, ourselves to other jurisdictions. I mean, I've always, I've already looked at the counties, they have specific, specific standards for single-family homes inside wetlands with some limitations, especially similar density that we have. I didn't see a requirement for a public hearing. I didn't, I have to look at what they do or even other jurisdictions to see what other limitations we could consider. Or if you have specific direction of the types of things that you could be concerned about, that we could probably look at as well.
For me, it would be the impact on wetlands. So, but I'm sort of more in favor of limitations as opposed to a CUP.
Member Stokel?
Yep. Thank you, um, and thank you for the information in the packet. So I'm looking on page three sixty-one with the chart that you have, um, which is very beneficial to me. So if I'm reading this correctly, the OR zoning, nothing is allowed except for bed and breakfast with limitations or a single-family dwelling with a CUP. Is that correct? For all citywide, any OR zoning, you can, there, there has to be nothing on it or bed and breakfast with limitations or single-family dwelling with CUP?
No, ma'am, this is, this is just an excerpt. There's, the full table is several pages long, and includes other uses that potentially could be allowed inside that zoning district. So that's what you're looking for, some kind of evaluation of all the types of uses that might, that are currently allowed.
Potentially that, and I think what also helped me is I want to make sure we're not just spot zoning either and making sure, like, what is the implications for the entire city if we were to remove this? And then clarification on the C and the L, so, and I was trying to read through this, so CUP looks like theirs would be, if a CUP were to be approved, it would be one unit per five acres, and the limitations would be one unit per three acres. No, that's, okay. I don't know where I read that, hang on.
Limitations for, uh, so, for a single-family home?
It was on three fifty-six under definitions, and it says standards for permitted uses with limitations. And it says in the GU zoning district, single-family would maybe permitted with a density of one per three acres, if that is permitted with limitations.
That's a different zoning district? But yes, that, so a density would, that's a specific density to that particular zoning district for residential, for, for the general use.
So that, yeah, that is GU, that's where I'm confused. Okay, is there something similar then for the OR?
Yes, if you look down on that same page, three fifty-six of your packet, I've got it highlighted there, standards for conditional uses. And it says in D one, paragraph D one there, and it says that the single-family, uh, may be approved through the CUP process at a density of one per five.
Yes, right above that, what is what I was looking at, I guess. At the same page on, under C, but, okay. So then what, I guess my question would be to what member Nelson is saying, if we did go to the limitations, is there a set? What that, what it, does that actually look like, or how do we define that if it's not this one per three?
Well, the, what, right now, it's one per five, you could keep that, that'd be the limitation.
Okay.
But you could also add additional limitations if you are, there are some concerns that you have.
So you're saying keep the limitations of a CUP without going through the CUP process?
Well, yeah, the limitation right now, there's only one condition to get us for, for a single-family home to go through the CUP. The absolute condition they must adhere to is that density, that one per five. Through the CUP process, you evaluate and council determines that there are any additional conditions you want to add.
Like setbacks?
I'm sorry?
Setbacks for instance, okay. Okay, um, yeah, and I, I think I was, there was some page in here that I was seeing that had fifty-foot setbacks on all sides.
The OR zoning district has a standard setback of fifty feet.
Okay. Yeah, I would be interested in exploring what those standards would look like if we did do the limited, but it was similar conditions of what a CUP would probably entail. I would be interested in that. And then I, I'm still a little confused on the wetland overlay and how that would work. If we were to say, okay, it's limited, and then that could trigger, they'd still have to meet those requirements. I, I'm still a little confused on that aspect, and that's probably me, but.
There's one question that we have when we look at that overlay. And so the overlay talks about protecting actual wetlands. But when you read it further, it talks, it seems to address impacts to the wetland. So if you can put a single-family home, and here's your density limitation, and you have to go through CUP process if you're gonna put the wetland, or I'm sorry, the home, inside a wetland. So in other words, you're impacting the actual wetland. But if, well, if you're not impacting the wetland in that same zoning district, in other words, you're putting the home on the upland portion of the property that has the same zoning district, are you impacting the wetland? So the question is, do we want to have, continue to have the CUP process to evaluate that potential impact of a home on the upland area, and whether it might impact the adjacent wetland or not? Or do you want to have limitations to make sure that there's a standard setback or buffer or distance, whatever that might be, to make sure it does not impact that adjacent wetland and doesn't require a public hearing? That's one consideration.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I think I just want to explore that. I was reading too, I think you, there's a definition in here that kind of stuck to me too. OR zoning, it seemed, was designed to enjoy the benefits of the natural environment of the city. Um, and I want to keep that in mind along with, you know, letting people be able to, if they want to build, you know, a home or two and enjoy the natural environment, um, while still protecting the city, I think, would be my viewpoint.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes, Brad, you were kind of going the direction that I, I kind of want you to go. I know limitations are there to protect and preserve. And, um, my, and you said earlier to a member, uh, Nelson that there was about seven of those limitations that was put in. And all I would ask is that, uh, those limitations, how would they change if it was a house versus, uh, bed and breakfast? And are we still doing the same thing? We still need to do the, the protecting and the preserving in this process. And whether it's a house or family, or single-family dwelling, or whether it's a bed and breakfast. So I would, uh, need to evaluate if we, we got these limitations for bed and breakfast, make sure that if we do a single-family dwelling, we're still doing the same protecting and preserving.
Okay.
Understood.
Anybody else, counsel? Uh, cards, please?
Stan Johnston?
Stan Johnston, this is a perplexing, uh, issue, and, uh, I'm surprised, somewhat surprised that, that there's so much discussion about it as compared to, uh, uh, some matters that I brought forward. In other words, I can compare this discussion that, uh, Dr. Stokel brought up about this issue, yet, yet there's no discussion of the topic that I brought up that starts with an F. F E L O N Y by city staff and elected officials. Want you to think about it. Thank you.
Next card.
Connie Milton?
Hi, Connie Milton, Windover Farms. I've got a couple of exhibits that we had back in June. Remember this table? That you're, you're just pointing out? Well, actually, my exhibit D back in June took the columns of this table for the pertinent zoning, OR versus R one B at that time. So OR zoning has a C for the CUP for single-family. And Brad mentioned, yeah, there's others. It's actually under recreation that he doesn't show on this table. But that's golf courses, parks, parks, tennis clubs, permitted uses. Of course, we all know that property would not have something like that, it's just too small. So the pertinent, I think Brad has the pertinent tables here for that particular piece of property. But I like your just thought process, because yes, the wetland conservation area is for the wetlands and protection of the wetlands, and Sandy's gonna talk more about that. But what we see kind of happening, a win-win here, is you really take this single-family dwelling row, make it two rows. One, the first row is single-family dwellings outside of a wetland conservation area, and put an L there. The other row is single-family dwelling inside a wetland conservation area, and that's where you put the C. So that way, you still do your CUP process if it's going to directly impact inside the wetlands, a home built inside the wetlands. But if it's gonna be a home built outside of the actual wet portion of the property, it's OR zoned still. But it's on the uplands portion of the OR zoning, that would be the L. And then you have your list of limitations, similar to what maybe the bed and breakfast in requires. Or it's gonna be something different, because those are particular to bed and breakfast. But we would like to see those, we would like to work with Brad on what those L limitations would be. But we think we could go there with that, and that way you wouldn't have to have a CUP application fee on, uh, on a single-family home built on the upland portions of the OR. Now, we would, of course, we still want to keep the one home on five acres, regardless of what it is, it's an L or whatever. And then, of course, the setbacks. But then, on this particular piece of property, if the point seven six or point seven eight acres is rezoned to OR out of community, the fifty-foot setback is no longer an issue, because, you know, we have our maps that we put together to scale that proves that point.
All right, good timing. Well done. Next card, please?
Um, Diane Frog?
Hi, Diane Frog, fifty-eight twenty-five Windover Way. And I just wanted to speak about when Jason and Megan bought the, right, bought the property
Right, right, right.
from the Piersons. The Piersons had applied in two thousand and seven for a CUP on that same property. And the only limitations that were put on that were these three limitations that would be put on any property, anybody that was building anything, no matter what it was owned. So they were not, you know, anything that would, anyone would not expect. So it's a minor division of the lot from the parent parcel, which they will have to do anyway. Submit a stormwater management plan during the building review. And in addition to the above-mentioned conditions, the applicant will be required to comply with other criteria as deemed necessary by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and the St. John's Water Management District. So those three items were the only thing that a CUP required. We don't have any problem with them not having to do a CUP if they're gonna build on the uplands and not write directly into the wetlands. And I went to the arbitration, and I think all the people that were there, we all agreed that that would be perfect, and they can rezone and straighten out their line and take some of the commercial property and put it into the OR to give them a little bit more on the setbacks. And we agreed with that, because we want them to build their two houses. You know, that's our fervent goal, you know, and then that's over, and we don't have to deal with this. You know, but we want it to stay OR zoning, you know, one house per five acres. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next card.
Last card is Sandra Klinger.
Wrap-up. Good evening, Sandra Klinger, twenty-six eighty Bobcat Trail, Windover Farms. You're being asked to consider changes to your land development regulations as a part of this mediation process. You know, the city's final order caused the owners no diminished use of their property and simply let them, left them with the same development rights they bought it with. With that said, here we are. Uh, we have a legislative process that gives landowners another bite at the apple. The community is, um, getting behind option two. It's very similar to what we proposed initially, but we have some concerns. And that has to do with the removal of the CUP process specifically from the WCA. Uh, and there's a couple reasons for that. It's two-tiered. One is, this is the vehicle that the city of Titusville has chosen as how it will protect wetlands in its policy. It chose the CUP process as how it's going to address it in OR and NPD zoning districts, uh, through a CUP process. That gives an added layer of scrutiny to apply additional conditions. It also gives the public an opportunity to participate. This is particularly important when we're talking about impacting the functional value of wetlands. It has a broader implication than just that to the property owner. We're talking about flood storage, nutrient trapping, wildlife habitat, carbon sequestration, et cetera. These all go way beyond just the boundary of the specific property. And this is exactly why the state and federal governments regulate these, because they have a broader public benefit. So, um, you may recall that WCA was never discussed during our public hearings, never came up, not even once. I sat through the mediation meeting. The WCA was never mentioned at that meeting for us sitting in the audience. That's why I was kind of surprised when it first came up, so we had to request their written documents, which we'd requested before the mediation, which we did not get until after. That's the only place it occurred. You may also recall the landowner saying specifically, they don't want to build anything in the wetlands, they hope to avoid the wetlands. So why is the city being asked to change policy citywide that would allow a development inside the WCA, which should be wetlands, that is where the wetlands actually physically occur after site review, after, uh, jurisdictional? Also, anytime you're talking about removing the public's participation in a process, I think you would use due caution. Because they should have a right to participate, particularly if it's gonna impact them. So that's it. Good luck.
Oh, good points. Next card. Oh, that's perfect. Counsel, comments, questions?
Oh.
Member Nelson?
I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
I'm just jumping ahead. Brad, I like Connie's idea of doing a tier A and a tier B. That, to me, seems to make sense.
I do too.
Yeah.
Thank you for that suggestion. That was a good suggestion. So, yeah, I would like to see us maybe look at doing that, because I think there is a difference in the impacts.
What do you think about that? I, 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 I'm not the expert, but I, I, I heard that and I thought the same. It seems to make sense.
So, yeah, we can do that. That doesn't sound hard. We'll evaluate how we can amend the code based on that direction, if that's where you're going with this. So basically, what you're suggesting is that a limitations for, a, a limited use, basically, for a single-family home in the OR zoning district, if the home's gonna be in the upland area.
Right.
Are there specific limitations that you think that should be applied? I think one question was maybe a setback or distance from the wetland. Is there a specific number? Right now, the OR has a standard of fifty feet from property lines, and you want to use that one as a basis.
I think, I think so, yes.
Again, I'm not the expert, but that sounds right also.
All right, I don't know what, I mean, this is, the question here is about the ramifications of how OR is gonna be applied throughout the city. Now, I don't know how this applies or how it'll work or help the rights.
Okay.
I don't have plans from them showing exactly where they're proposing to put their house, how far away it is from any delineated wetlands.
But I think the idea for us tonight is, do we want to change it? Because we had bed and breakfast, I could do a bed and breakfast easier than I could put a house on a piece of property. And that, that just wasn't making sense. So, I, I mean, I don't know about everybody else, but I, I must say, I think everybody else is on the same page. We're doing this because there seems to be an inconsistency in our code.
I think that it gives, and interject here, the tiers gives a little bit, we keep hearing that term win-win. I think that that could be the ultimate win-win. And, uh, well, let me see if there's any else. Are you back up, member Nelson, or is that still you? Brad, what do you think? Um, I I always say that to you guys. What do you think? I kind of like where it was going.
I think that's reasonable. We can come back to you and see, we'll evaluate and see what the ramifications or impacts might be to other properties. I mean, I don't want to tailor this to any particular property. I don't think that's the intent.
No, a, a, and I would say if it hasn't been said, that I don't want to make this specific to one situation, you know, the rights or Windover, but I think this might fit where we need it to fit.
Okay. Overall, staff does believe that a single, CUP is just not necessary for a single-family home, especially if it's not going to be impacting anything.
See, Amanda, do we need to, our city attorney, whichever one, do we need to do anything with the vote?
I think, Brad, you got sufficient guidance?
I have, this is the following guidance I have. So maybe evaluate the idea of a tiered system where you have a CUP requirement if it's going to impact a wetland, a limited use if it's not in the upland, in the OR zoning district. A setback from, the home should be a setback from wetland. I'll establish a setback in here. And then we, we still have the density requirement as well. Okay.
That's what I see it, yes.
So you will come back with an ordinance with those proposals?
Yes.
That's perfect. There we go. Win-win. All right. Three people left. Here we go. Where was I? Advised by the CUP. Uh, we're on B. 12B.
Yeah. I just got, it's advised.
Oh, here comes someone.
So, I, on to item 12B, which is electric vehicle parking. At the 13 December 2022 regular meeting, Member Nelson expressed concerns of condominium developments forbidding individuals from charging their electric vehicles. Member Nelson commented on a discussion that she had with an individual that advised that Orlando changed their code through an ordinance as it relates to the issue. Counsel did not have any objection to staff reviewing the ordinance prepared by Orlando and staff's findings are part of your packet. Rachel was here as well as Mr. Parrish to answer any questions on your discussion.
Just, just to clarify, it sounded like I got, there were two questions coming up at the last time at the meeting and that was, can you require EV parking spaces in condo associations? So we provided some information about that. And then also the reference to Orlando's regulation and that is specific to new development and expansion of development. So we included that ordinance as well. We'll try and answer any questions you have about it.
One of the reasons I brought it up is because a lot of the manufacturing companies, well, two-fold. A lot of the manufacturing companies, Honda, GM says no more gas cars after 2035. And I know Mr. Robinson's going to be sad, along with some other people.
Exactly.
Honda says that they're going to have, I think it's 50% of their cars will be EV by 2030. And so, you know, it poses a problem because people who are making that switch, and I think there's going to be a lot of people making that switch now because you've got a $7,500 credit. So that's going to push people that way. So I, I checked on our condo association and one of our inspectors is my neighbor. And he and I talked about it and I talked to our manager. And the way our condos are set up, they're, I can change my garage to charge my car. They're estimating it will be $75,000. There are 200 units in there. And so that's really not feasible. So to me, if we're going to have more and more electric cars, we need places to charge them. And that seems to be the way it's going. When, when I moved into the condos, there were, I think, one or two electric cars in there. Right now, in my one building, there are six. And the same for the other buildings. So it's getting out there, people are making that switch and I, I just don't think we need to wait until 2030 and then go, what do we do now? So that, that's my thought. I will add, too, that we just did the sustainability plan for Titusville and that was part of it, was making sure we had places to charge electric vehicles. So I don't think that the Orlando ordinance is totally onerous. 2% of the parking spaces to be equipped with EV charging stations and 10 to 20% EV capable. I will say that Target has 15 chargers, usually over half of those are full. And talking to the people from Tesla, they're charging us double whatever they're paying for the electricity. So people are making money off of it, but I think a nudge in that direction would be good. So that's my thought.
Vice Mayor.
I was put on the spot by Member Nelson and, you know, my, my wife loves electric cars and she knows that and I'm not in favor of it, but she knows that as well. And my thoughts on it is, is that we can, I, I understand the need for being able to plug your car in, but I don't believe in, in mandates to builders and so forth. If that is part of the construction process, that is fine. And then you have that in mind when you are building a new residence, but just mandating it from the, the power seat is, I'm not in favor of to, to do that. A percentage of the car parking, based on the number of, of homes, that's fine, but it shouldn't be mandated by government. I don't think, and that's, that's my thought.
Okay. Member Stokoe.
Yeah, I think I'm kind of along those same lines. I feel like if that's the direction we're going in, if I was a developer, I would probably choose to do that to make my place more attractive. I just, I do have a hard time mandating it from that aspect. However, I will say, I think it's important for us to keep it in mind, like we have the charging stations at the welcome center as we start doing some of our planning and making some changes, especially to our CRA area and other areas around the city. I think it would be nice to keep that at the forefront with any of our properties to see if that's something we wanted to potentially add. But yeah, I just have a hard time mandating that from the government standpoint for other people.
Well, I think, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead, reply.
I think the Florida legislators are going to mandate it at some point, but maybe what we should do between now and then is do it as an incentive. If you do charging stations, then you get some kind of credit somewhere. Would that work?
All right, let me go ahead and add my part here because I said it at the last meeting, so I, I, I'm not a mandate guy. I'm not a government mandate guy for lots of reasons. But the other thing is that I think that this should be a private sector and the incentive should be that they give a better condo product to their purchasers or their buyers when they add that. Another concern for me is that when we start, and I'm not disagreeing that maybe we're ahead of the curve if you do that, so I'm not absolutely poo-pooing that that's not a good idea, but I don't like the mandate. I'm not saying it's a bad idea to have them. I'm just thinking that if I'm building a condo and I want to get more people, and in this case, to be very honest, be more affluent people, I would add charging stations. The average electric car costs $67,000. The average vehicle that's not electric is $50,000. That's basic. That's not totally accurate for every single thing. I'm sure there are electric cars that are a lot more than that and certainly there are other cars that are more. But the average that I pulled up is 67, $17,000 different, which basic, basically means we're talking about a different level. You know, we're, we're, I don't want to use the word affluent, but we're certainly moving towards the more wealthy. If I'm a condo builder, I want to move towards the wealthy. And, and I think that that's something that they should consider when they're building. I think it's a private sector thing. If there's some kind of incentive you like on that, I might be able to hear that, but I'm a non-government mandate guy where we can be. Anyway, that, that's, that's where I'm at. I knew Member Nelson would have something there, right? Yes, ma'am.
By the way, the average EV, when I went and checked it out, I could buy a Honda Accord or I could buy a Tesla. And I chose the Tesla. So that being said, and let me also point out.
What are you saying about average cost, though? You, you.
$40,000.
$40,000?
$40,000.
For what?
For a Tesla.
Okay. And again, I'm not going to try to get into how much they all cost, I'm just getting a very basic off the internet, $67,000 if you ask what the average price of an electric automobile is.
Well, you can add to it, but it's like any other car. Buy a Honda, you add packages to it. But the Honda and the Tesla were the same price. That being said, let me say, are there incentives, maybe Brad, Rachel, that you can think of that we can add that might encourage people in that manner?
I mean, I can't think of any particular incentives that there's, that's a, sentence complicated because what you're talking about is trade-off. What do you, what is, what is the value of trading off something that's a requirement in the code to require this other thing? So in other words, the incentive is if you put in so many EV stations or EV spaces or EV capable spaces, we will reduce your parking requirement or reduce something else that's been required in the code, regardless, whatever that might be. So that's, that's something that takes a lot of thought and research to figure out what that is and it has to work, too. It has to be tweaked all the time when you talk about incentives. So it is a possibility, we can search, to look into that, but I'm not sure, I can't think of anything offhand what offer.
Rachel, Rachel, can you think of any? Rachel stays quiet, so we have to make her talk.
In terms of incentive, I, I would think that it would be parking-based incentives, you know, maybe reducing the amount of spaces that they are required to have on, on-site or the dimensions of those spaces could be altered. I mean, it would also just depend on the appetite of developers to go after those incentives. And then I would also like to point out that where this conversation is going, there's also concerns about environmental justice and just equity considerations overall. Just because of someone's income level doesn't mean whether or not they make that decision to buy an EV and they should have as equal opportunity to be able to charge.
Yeah.
Charge their vehicles. So that's just a consideration to make. So when you're buying a, a standard vehicle, you have to pay for gas at the pump, which is a fluctuating price point. And EVs don't have to make those kind of payments on a regular basis. So that is a consideration that people make when they are purchasing EVs that aren't in the upfront cost.
Correct.
Okay, I think that, you know, I'm not a mandate guy either, but I am a capitalist. And I think that the condo builders, if they recognize the fact that we are headed in the direction of EVs, that I think their incentive would be to put it in to attract people to come in. So I, I don't think we need to mandate it. I'm, I'm concerned about making parking spaces smaller and cutting down parking spaces because smaller parking spaces mean that TPD is going to be coming in for more accidents that they're going to have in the parking lots. So I think that a smart developer building a complex is going to put in EV stations. We didn't require Target to put in those EV stations and the EV stations showed up, right? So I think that's going to happen eventually with the, the way that we're headed right now. I think that's going to happen.
And I, I agree. I think we've, several have said that, that the, the market is going to predict and it's going to allow for the condo owners to say, hey, and I, I would venture to guess there's probably more electric cars in your area than in my area. And I, I live in Imperial Estates and you live along the river there. And I'm just saying that if this makes sense, if I'm built, and I'm not, but if I'm building a condo, I'm thinking those are folks I want to attract. So I don't think we need to get involved. I think it should be a private sector thing and I think it will be.
Can I point out one thing? If you take a look at page 369 of your packet, that's really the crux of what the Orlando's code is. They have that matrix there. So their threshold requirements start at 50 spaces for multifamily and then 250 spaces for any other type of use. Those are large parking lots. So this is only required for large developments, basically, in the city of Orlando. Doesn't affect small developments. The other thing, too, is they also have 20% EV capable requirement. So that just allows for someone to develop and include some capability later on in the future they can add that because retrofitting it is almost impossible for a lot of developments. So that's just something to consider.
So when you, definitely understand, when you say EV capable, okay, they need 220. Are you saying they're going to run the 220 and just cap it off and not put in the station? I don't, I'm, I'm, help me understand what EV capable means.
I'm not sure exactly. I just know what I see here and maybe Rachel could chime in on this, but it's, they have certain standards here in this ordinance of what that's supposed to mean.
Okay.
So I think where this conversation even originally stems from is Member Jolynn Nelson's concern about how expensive it is to retrofit parking spaces to put in electric vehicle charging. So part of a lot of ordinances that cities are adopting include EV capable. So when the developer goes in to put the new parking lot or parking garage, some of these spaces will have all of the utility underlining them so that in the future, when they want to put in the actual charging depot spot, it's, everything is already set up in place. You don't have to go back in and change all the infrastructure to make the parking spot EV-ready. It's already EV-capable and the last step is to deploy the actual chargers. So it's reducing the cost for putting in a parking, putting in EV charging after the fact by making sure that all the underlying infrastructure is already there for the charging, but without the upfront cost of putting in the actual charging depot.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, but I know that to run that dedicated 220 line under there is going to be an expense to the developer, too, whether we put in the station or not. I, I have no idea how much the station costs, but the, the individual cost of running a dedicated 220 line from the circuit.
For a car?
Yes, is going to be high. So even EV capable is an expense that they have to do. Okay?
Vice Mayor.
Yes, one of the things I, I want us to consider that, and, and the, it was mentioned about that, you know, the, the fuel, one of the things we have discussed in our Space Coast Transportation meeting, how are the, the states going to tax these electric vehicles for traveling on the highway? They haven't came up with that, a, a method yet because the gasoline vehicle, we pay the gas tax and I don't think the cities get any revenue from gasoline taxes. We do? So that's going to have to come back and that charge is going to have to be considered as well.
Yes.
And we haven't figured out, not only the cost, I don't, right now, I think it's about, it's a balance. With, uh, it costs about the same cash dollars for an electric vehicle as you pay for a, you know, a, 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 just a mid-sized car. Uh, and, uh, so when they start adding the taxes on, because you got to pay for using the highways and the byways. The electric cars is, plus the cost of building station, electric cars is, is, is going to have a tough time. Uh, I don't think we're going to make that mark by two thousand and thirty-five to do it, because it's, to put all those two-twenty's under the highway. And then, we're going to have to face, uh, we have cars that, uh, are going to be in accidents. How do we dispose of all of the hazardous materials that are in the electric cars and so forth? So, it's going to be some challenges down the road that, uh, are, are, are going to be prohibitive, uh, with, with going forward. But I think that the, uh, how are we going to tax them to, I, I know that discussion is on the table. Uh, how are we going to tax them for using, uh, driving up and down, uh, A-one-A? And it, it's, we got to figure out how to do that.
Yeah, there are certain jurisdictions that are already, um, trying to figure out new tax structures, uh, based on vehicle miles traveled instead of a gas tax. Um, those conversations are mostly taking place at a federal level right now. And then also, certain states like Oregon have already started to implement, uh, different tax structures. Um, and I think Florida is considering it, but I don't know how far along those conversations are.
I think as you said, Vice Mayor, there is, it could be a, a tough road. We're not going to try to solve that here, but I think it ought at least be mentioned that, uh, there's been some electrical grid problems in big cities. And, uh, there's been some brownouts when it gets too hot and too cold. And, uh, that's going to be an extra pull if you were going to, you know, go ahead and put all those cars on electric. I don't think it's going to be that easy either. But that's not our concern tonight. Um, our concern is, uh, do we want to mandate, or incentivize, or however you want to talk about it. Our developers who are building condominiums to put, uh, stations, uh, electrical plug-in stations, um, in their condos. Um, do I have anybody else that wants to comment here?
I, I think the discussion's a little broader than just condos. I think you used it as an example, but I think there's commercial implications of shopping centers.
Okay, good point. Condos, and, and I did get focused on condos. I, um, I, I tend to think that's the, the biggest sell, because those are where the cars are going to be. Uh, target parking lot's one thing, but that's not where the cars are parking at the end of the night. So, I was focused on condos. It, it all adds up to the same thing. Are we going to mandate? Um, with that, member Stokoe.
I do have one question. I would be curious on the difference in the cost. So, what it would cost someone to run the line, you know, ahead of time to be ready versus someone having to do it after the fact? Um, why, why are you shaking your head, Brad?
Yeah, that's not, I'm not sure, because I'm not even sure, like, Mr.
Cole's discussion or question about having to run that line there, it is expensive. And then later on, trying to, I don't know what knows how many years later, put that station there, that cost might be completely different, or double. I don't know.
Okay.
And it's hard to estimate what that would be.
Yeah.
Hold up, hold on.
To, to put the line in when they're building it, but that's going to incur a tremendous cost. But putting it in after is going to be a bigger cost, because now you got to tear up the pavement to put it in, you know, so. Now, you're damned if you do, and you're damned if you don't in this situation.
And it's tough for me, because I do want to plan for the future, and I think about that when it, I'm glad we voted on the thing earlier regarding, like, planning for a hundred-year storm versus a twenty-five, or. Like, I do want to do those things for the safety of our citizens. This one's just tough for me, because we've alluded to, like, I don't know exactly what that future looks like for electric, if we will all be electric, like, or are there implications for that? So, get out of here. So, I think that's where I'm at. I'm just like, I want to make a good decision, and I feel like I just don't know enough of the future to make that call. And until I do, I don't, I'm not really in favor of mandating certain things.
All right, hold up. We've had our next discussion. Hit our buttons before we talk.
Counsel, if I may.
Yes, see, look how she did that, Herman. Yes. That's all right, brother.
I wanted to talk about a few points that are brought up on the city's Sustainability Action Plan, which we hope to bring before you soon for adoption. Um, and these have already been brought before you when we presented the Phase Two of the Sustainability Action Plan. So, the third goal of the plan is to reduce our energy consumption and to start a transition to clean energy. So, the first objective under that goal is to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. And one of the action items we've identified for that is to plan for a green municipal fleet, including electric vehicles, hybrid, and fuel-efficient vehicles. Um, kind of a combination approach, because at the end of the day, electric vehicles on, on their own, aren't going to solve, you know, the climate crisis, or whatever you want to call it. Um, so, it, there has to be a, a managed approach to how we do that. And sometimes, um, hybrid or fuel-efficient vehicles actually have less, uh, carbon emissions than electric vehicles. Um, so then, the second objective under that is to reduce our energy consumption. And how we, how we can do that, one of the action items is to implement building code provisions that support energy efficiency improvements, renewable energy, and EV readiness. And then further on, um, the third objective under that is to make progress in obtaining electricity from renewable energy sources. And to prioritize future EV charging station based at city facilities powered by renewable energy. Uh, going into the conversation about how, where this energy is going to come from. A lot of these, or some of the newer technologies incorporate solar panels to charge the electric vehicles. Um, so it shouldn't be a strain on the energy grid if we couple EV charging stations with renewable energy sources. And then, um, under the fourth goal of the Sustainability Action Plan, is to continue to improve and adopt innovative infrastructure to improve the quality of life within the city. So, an action item under that is to develop a strategic EV charging network throughout the city and adopting EV readiness ordinance. So, this is included within the Sustainability Action Plan, um, that was presented to you all back in October. And so, I just wanted to point that out. And then, um, in consideration of whether or not the city should mandate EV parking, I would like to draw your attention to some of the things that are happening. That, since Orlando has done a lot of extensive research on this already. Orlando projects that by twenty-thirty, thirty percent of registered vehicles within the Orlando area will be electric. Um, and so, those are just some of the considerations when development is being approved. Now, we may not be thinking about electric vehicles, uh, today, but as we've discussed, the cost of developing, um, paved surfaces is really expensive. Just alone, a parking lot costs so much money. It's kind of absurd. So, when we put those in, you want to think about the lifespan of that parking lot, and then what the future is going to look like. So, we want to make sure, um, that we are planning for vehicles that are going to be coming online in the next five to ten years as well.
Member Stokoe.
Question, for the developments that we have underway, and I know we have a lot, are you seeing people, the developers, implementing charging stations? It, no, okay, that's what I was wondering.
Well, now, some of the hotels have.
Oh, they have, okay, excuse me.
Hotels, and, um, there is some discussion with, and a couple of the apartment complexes that they, they feel that they may be incorporating those. Now, they hadn't formally done that yet, but they feel that that product is a better apartment complex if it does have those options.
Okay, yeah, I, this one's just tough, because I hear some of the stuff that you were saying, Rachel, and I like the, I like the solar panels. Like, those things I would be very much in favor of and giving incentives to. Um, the EV red, I don't know why, it's just, that's just such a challenge for me, and I, I probably think you're going to be right. And Jolynn, I think you're going to be right. I do, I do think it's coming, and I just don't know the best way to manage it. I don't know. I'm, I'm tough on, this one's tough for me.
Can we, can we offer a solution? So, the Sustainability Action Plan, there's a Phase Three, it's going to be implementation part, that Rachel's going to come back to you. And implementation, one of those things could be that we come up with an incentive package for building that may include this as well. So, we probably could roll that into that strategy in the future. I don't have a date for you on that, but we still haven't finished the Phase Three of the plan yet.
Right, and what Phase Three is, is that implementation, which is, does a schedule for when certain of, one of these action items will, uh, hopefully be, be coming for you. So, we'll have short-term actions, medium term, which is like, you know, five years, ten years, and then long-term, which may be ten years and beyond. And so, um, you know, we'll rely on the city council to make sure that our implementation plan, um, the strategy and the, at the timeframes. Align with the goals and objectives of the city. So, if EV readiness isn't something we feel ready to do today or tomorrow, it might be something that we could revisit in two years. And that could be written down within the action plan itself.
I like the word you used, incentive, and I know that's been a word we've used. I don't like the word mandate. So, if we can work this into an incentivized situation, I could be more leaning towards that. I have, I have concerns, and, and, and again, I, I go back to what I said to, uh, member Nelson before, the, the thought, and, and, or, you know, let's, let's do this, they're coming. I get that. Um, I, I feel like in some cases, maybe rightfully so, we're leaning over backwards to make sure we, we meet their needs. While gas prices go to four dollars a gallon, that's a whole nother story. Uh, so, member Nelson.
Can I say this? Okay, so, one of the reasons we're putting, bringing this up now, and I'll call Janet tomorrow. Um, is because it takes us time to get things in place. It takes these guys' time to, to work on this. Um, this isn't going to affect things that are already in a pipeline. We're talking about things that are in the pipeline next year. Um, so, my thought is, we need to be looking at it and figuring out what we need to do next year, maybe the year after. But we need to have a plan on how we're going to do it.
I think we, for it, against it, uh, find a way that it doesn't work, it does work. I think we'd be silly if we didn't know it's coming. And we'd be silly if we didn't make plans for its arrival. I just, I can do a lot of that planning, and I agree with a lot of that. If we don't say the city mandated, our developers, our, our builders, that you have to do this. Show me a way we can incentivize that and encourage that, and not have it come from us, that this is what you have to do, and this is the code, and this is the ordinance. That's how I feel about it.
Okay, I can live with that.
Yeah, and, and again, I'm not opposed to doing it. I'm opposed to saying you have to do it. And that's pretty much where I'm at. I, I'm, I'm for them wanting to do it. You know, I think that, uh, you know, look over there, at one of our last people left, if you're still awake over there, Rodney. Uh, I can't imagine Rodney building something that's not going to have something that has people who want to come up to his, his project. This would be one of those things. As the future goes, people are saying, hey, would you have, I can see people saying, do you, do you have the, uh, electrical, I don't know what you call those things, charging stations? Um, I just go to the gas station. Um, do you have charging stations? Oh, wow, I like that. You know, I can see that. Um, you know, back in the days when you used to go to a hotel and they had color TV. Yeah, I know Rodney remembers that. Rodney, you went when they didn't have any TV then, yeah? We went to a lot of black and white, anyway. So, that, that being said, I think it is along those lines. Um, you know, color TV was coming, and now it's in all the hotels, and it's flat-screen, it's great. Electric cars are coming, and the outlets are coming, and they'll be everywhere. And, and I don't disagree with it. I just don't want to use the word mandate in anything we do with this. That's about it.
I, I just want to.
Yes, you may.
I hit my butt.
You're, you're third, you're third in line.
Oh.
No, you're not.
No, I just want to make sure that, that we understand that that two-twenty line is a dedicated line that's coming straight from the service on the pole. And each one is a dedicated line. So, we're talking about a pretty expensive proposition, okay? I just, I'm, I'm only throwing that out for informational purposes.
That's good information.
Although we need to do it, it's, and it's, even if we give them incentives, uh, it's expensive.
I didn't, and I'm glad you say things like that, because that's, again, I use this a lot when I'm not, I'm not the expert. And I knew it would be expensive, everything is, but you seem to say this is really exorbitant, so they're going to have to really be on it.
They're going to have to be on it, because Brad, you know, it's got to be a dedicated two-twenty line. You can't just run a regular line out there. It's a dedicated line.
Hold up one second, Vice Mayor.
And, and that's not what they're telling the, the people. One of the things that's going to happen, that I believe that I think the mayor touched on, and. When the developers get to the point, and the engineers get to the point, that is some financial advantages for doing this. They're going to know what to come to the cities to ask for. That when they figure out that, you know, how am I going to do this? I need to do this because it puts money in my pocket? Uh, they're going to know what to, to come and sit down and talk to staff and, and what they will be bringing for, because.
I agree.
We don't, we don't have to get too involved, but we need to be prepared and, and understand that it's coming. But when the, with the, when it started, uh, increasing the, the green in the pocketbook, they're going to come up with some answers and how to approach this.
Member Nelson.
I'm just going to point this out. I have to disagree with you guys. Um, the charger downtown next to the visitor center is not a two-twenty. It is not the high-speed charger. And that's something that charges in twenty, thirty minutes, and that is expensive. That's one, one-ten?
One-twenty.
One-twenty. I can also charge my garage by taking my little cord and plugging it into the outlet. So, it doesn't necessarily have to be the two-twenty. I mean, it's slower.
I'm not the guy to answer.
It's like five miles an hour, if you really want to do it. The one downtown is thirty miles an hour. And the superchargers, you get full charge in thirty minutes.
I, I have a question for you on that note, but I won't answer it live on that.
Oh, boy.
Really?
I don't even want to know. Um, uh, let me, let me move.
We'll go to the parking lot.
Let me move to the, uh, let me move to cards.
We have one card, Stan Johnston.
Stan, you have an electric car?
Pardon?
You have an electric car?
No, but I have an, an electric, uh, lawnmower. I have electric bicycle.
Good, sorry.
Uh, and I have electric shaver. You don't use it, though? That's right. But, um, uh, yes, you can charge, uh, you, it, it just takes a transformer to go from a hundred and ten to two-twenty. And, uh, and, and I'm not sure about variable. Easily, easily, you can, you, so, what Mrs. Nelson was talking about, uh, you can, uh, you, I don't know why the two-twenty was required for something like that. But, but a hundred and ten will, will take it just as long as you don't, uh, you know, overload it. Uh, the, uh, uh. A few years ago, is that someone was, uh, I had these mortgages that you, people could get mortgages that, without showing what they made, how much money they made, whether they could afford it. And then, then, uh, the, um, mortgages were set up so that, uh, if they failed, that there was, that they were insured by AGI. Well, I thought both of those things, independently, was nonsense, complete nonsense. And, uh, I think other people did, too, but in two thousand and eight, we saw what happened. Why am I bringing this up? Well, it's because, uh, right now, we're using gasoline, is gasoline is taxed. To construct our roads, to pave our roads, to repave our roads, to Ford FDOT, to give employees expenses and so forth, and, and. And so, uh, gasoline tax in some countries is about the only source of income they have, is what I hear in Europe. It's the only source, is the gasoline tax. So, when that country, country in Europe changes to all-electric, what is it going to do? It has no income. That's what I've heard. I've heard that there's some countries that, that, uh, smaller countries that have, that's all their income is from gasoline tax. That's what I've heard. I don't believe it's true, but maybe it's close to being true. So, uh, regarding, I'm asking Rachel and Brad to think about this, is that, is that, uh, when you're thinking about sustainability. If you're in one of those countries that has this, uh, their budget dependent upon gasoline taxes. And then you change to electric, what are they going to do? So, that's another issue that I would like you to think about. And by the way, Mr. Cole had a good, and, uh, several of you had, well, is that mandating, I think, is not a good way to do it. is not a good way to do it. So I got about three seconds. Thank you very much. Take care. Bye. Happy, happy New Year.
All right, any other cards?
Yes, sir.
All right, so I, I, I think we all agree that we need to get ahead of the curve and realize that there's gonna be some needs for electric car stations, charging stations. We may or may not agree, I, I will speak for myself and heard it up here, that I would like to incentivize developers, condo builders, shopping mall builders, whoever would be involved with this. I don't know what the incentive needs to be, it sounds like you have some. I am not for mandating, this is what you have to do to build here. This is what you have to do. I don't like the have-to-do part. I can't imagine telling Rodney he needs to have trees in his subdivision because he knows that will sell more. And, I say, well, you know, as I said that, I thought, well, we did that, didn't we?
We did that.
Rodney, I'm surprised you didn't say you already did that.
Yeah.
All right, you, you know what I'm saying. The point is, you're gonna give it the best product you can, and that's going to be a selling point. I don't want the city of Titusville to say, you have to have that selling point. I think they'll figure that out themselves, and like Vice Mayor said, they'll know to come to us and figure it out quick. So with that said, what is it, you know, as, as we are giving you guidance, what is it we need to say to you? I, I think that there's some differences of opinion up here on mandate or not, but outside of that, I think we all agree we need to move forward.
I think there's, I don't think there's any direction we need to get from you. I think we've got a lot of questions and opinions, we understand where you, what your concerns are. Like we said earlier, we're gonna roll it into a possible incentive package that we may bring back to you as part of the implementation or later stages. It's something we'll suggest to you later, so we'll come back up to another topic.
Well, and you, when you said you want a solution, what you guys said there seemed to come across pretty solid to me, that...
My solution to you was to delay, basically allow us to explore this option that we discussed earlier.
I don't disagree with that, but to some degree, I don't know if we have a timeline on that, but...
Could I, could I make the suggestion that as part of the sustainability action plan, those items will be included, and you will see those, we just don't have a timeline of when you'll see those?
I, I, that's fine with me, I just, I, I can't imagine that we're going, we can't have a mandate if it doesn't come in front of us, and that's all I'm trying to stay away from. I'm not trying to stay away from electric charging stations. I'm, you know, perhaps the more the merrier, but I do not want to come across as, you know, city Titusville ordinance says, you know, if you're going to build here, you have to, have to, have to, have to. No, I'd like them to do that because it's a smart thing to do to sell condos or have people come to your mall or your store, whatever it may be.
So just so you know what to expect, we will come back to you with Phase Three, which will be an implementation matrix of all the different things that will, city will, we're proposing the city should do, or other agencies should do to help implement this plan. And one of those things would be this idea of an incentive package of some sort that may include EV stations as well. So we're not gonna have it all fleshed out next time you see this, I think. That's what, that's what you'll see next time.
That's great. I think we've got, nothing else, I think we all have put out there where we stand with this. You know, I certainly understand the capitalist part, because I think that allows for incentive to be the capitalist. And I don't know that I understood exactly just how much that would cost, and you make a good point, that if you put it in later, it's gonna cost more. So I think that that's a positive to say, do it now. With this, anything else, councilman to add? I see none. You've got your stuff from us, we're good. All right, very, very well done. Thank you so much. Conversation, discussion was good. We're moving on over here. Are we on, City Manager?
Onto item 12C, which is the outdoor storage in DMU zoning district. At your 13 December 2022 regular meeting, Mr. Honeycutt represented the property owner at 1012 South Hopkins Avenue, requested staff review the land development regulations pertaining to outdoor storage. Council did not support and advise ability to prepare an ordinance change at that time. However, council did support Mr. Honeycutt's request to bring back additional information. In your packet is the additional information, and Brad is here to bring you up to speed on what those are.
Go ahead, sir.
I'll just briefly describe that there's the downtown sub-district, as you, I mentioned last time to you, you'll see on the map on page 383 of your packet, several sub-districts of the overall downtown mixed-use zoning district, and the only sub-district within that mixed-use district that allows outdoor storage is midtown, and you can see on the map there, based on the limitations of that use, where that outdoor storage is allowed on the property. It can only be in the back of the property, cannot be in the front or the side. So we've estimated that the, really the only place, and it has a, there's a distance requirement, of course, if you remember that 300-foot distance requirement from residential. So you can see on the map there where outdoor, outdoor storage could potentially be located, and even that doesn't really illustrate the true location of where it could be because of that frontage limitation and side yard limitation as well. So outdoor storage in this district is very limited. I've included sections of the code here that are the outdoor storage limitation in the DMU zoning district. But I've also included, just so you understand, the difference between that as a primary use versus an outdoor, as an accessory use. So I included both sections of the code related to that, because there was a question last time about the M1 zoning district, and that's a standard warehouse and manufacturing, light industrial zoning district. It allows outdoor storage, but only as an accessory use to a primary, so it has to be in a closed building of some use there first. And there are limitations on that. I've also included the descriptions of the various sub-districts of the downtown mixed-use zoning district, and that's on page 388. So each one is unique. So with that, I'll try and answer any questions you have about this information I provided to you.
Hold on. Member Stokel?
Yep. I, I think, if I recall from reviewing this item, I think the biggest thing to consider is the area. Correct me if I'm wrong, I, I know we talked about the storage issue, and then what types of storages, storage facilities can be allowed. And when we talk about the downtown area specifically, it's important for us to think about the vision for downtown and why maybe certain things are in the code that are allowed, and then other things are not. So I, I feel like, for me, when I'm looking at this, it's, it's more so from the lens of the downtown and what's allowed, and what we want our downtown, midtown, uptown to look like versus other areas of the city. Would that be accurate?
Yeah, I'm gonna refer back to the discussion, the question that was posed last time about, it's allowed in M1, but there's a more restrictive in the downtown mixed-use.
Right.
There's a big difference between those two, two different zoning districts. The downtown, you have a mixed-use zoning district that allows a lot of different types of uses that may not seem compatible to each other to get, to get beat next to each other. And so then includes performance standards to try and control and mitigate some of those incompatibilities. So you can have a light industrial use or warehouse next to a commercial or retail use, or you can have a hotel or multifamily use, probably next to a really high-intense commercial use. But they're, because of the scale inside that mixed-use district, they can all work as long as the performance standards are met. So you see on page 384, it's got specific standards of how, what's allowed as far as permitted for an outdoor storage in the zoning district, and it's very restrictive for a reason, because of those adjacent uses. The M1 district is a standalone, single-use district. So all the other zoning districts in the city are, are just that, they're these giant single-use districts, and so they stand alone by themselves, they really don't have to have performance standards. Is it appropriate to put that zoning district here in this location, or is this zoning district next to it? That's different from the downtown code. So the downtown zoning district is based on a vision for what the city really wanted to see there, a very urbanized, mixed development pattern.
Yeah. And I think that, council, that's kind of where my challenge has been for this, and when we talk about, especially at CRA meetings, and we're talking about our vision for CRA and wanting to see it more lively, and when people are entering it, I feel like, reading this, it seems like, okay, well, why is it allowed here, this, this, this? I feel like that was a lot of due diligence, and a lot of work went into trying to make a cohesive vision for the area. So that's been like my challenge with this particular piece.
Member Nelson?
Well, I was nosy, so I went down and looked at the piece of property, and you basically have an RV place, and then a couple car places, prison book ministries there, there's the old car lot that's across the street, which is vacant right now. So it's fairly commercial kind of area. Looking at the property, you know, because one of the things I thought about is 300 feet to the residential area, it's really weird, it's like you walk along and there's the railroad, the railroad track is raised. I'll, I'll use your measurement, eight feet. So you really can't see the houses on the other side, and there's brush here, then you got the railroad track, and then the houses are a fair distance on the other side. I mean, you could sort of see the roofs, but not a lot of anything. So I, I sort of understood what Rodney was saying, but you don't want to do a spot zoning, that's not good. You don't want to say, okay, it might work on this piece of property, because then somebody else is gonna pop up and say, well, what about me? So my question was, would it be appropriate to make it 200 feet as opposed to 300 feet? Because to me, that railroad track really divides the character of those two pieces of properties, because this area over here is all commercial, and then you have an area over here on the other side of the tracks, which is residential. So I don't know the answer to that, but I'm sort of curious about, Brad, what you would think.
So the, the western boundary of the CRAs is bordered by, is the FEC railroad.
Right.
So I, I'm just gonna throw this out. If you are looking for modifications to this, you could say unless adjacent to FEC railroad. Or you could make limitations that only specific types of outdoor storage can have a lesser distance requirement. If you look at this, the, the limitations of this use on page 384 of your packet, I mean, it goes, it, it looks, it talks a lot about hazardous materials. So outdoor storage can include a lot of different, different things, not necessarily just RV or vehicles, or any of their boats or anything like that. It could be pallets and barrels of all kinds of flammable and hazardous materials as well. And I think that's really primarily what this is focused on, because it talks a lot about that.
So you, we could turn around and say that RVs would be appropriate in conjunction with a RV business?
Yeah, so right now, this property, I, I mean, this property has an RV dealership on it now.
Right.
Which is permitted. Question is, do they want to have outdoor storage? In other words, do they want to store, rent out spaces for storage of materials and vehicles on this property? That's what it sounds like to me. That's a different type of use than an RV dealership.
Yeah. I'm just wondering if we could say, in conjunction with an RV dealership, you can do this. Would that be appropriate?
I, I, that's, yeah, that's your, yeah, that's up for, that's a different type of use, I mean, or a discombination of uses? I mean, that, yeah, I mean, there, there's nothing prohibiting two different uses on one property. It's just each use is gonna have its own limitations. So I don't think there's anything wrong with what you're trying, what you're suggesting.
Yeah.
I think what we're trying to get away from is the spot zoning.
Right.
And that concerns me more than anything, that we try to make this work, and we spot zone, and then we get killed down the road in US1, Hopkins, wherever else, that we don't want something like this. I think that your little proposal makes it a little, it makes it doable to me if we can get Brad to figure it out for us.
On page 388 of your packet, you'll see that what I've excerpted from the code shows the map of the sub-districts, and then further down, it talks about, gives you like definitions of each of those sub-districts, what they're intended to be. So each one is a little different, uptown has a different character and intent and reasoning for standards in there differently than you see in the midtown, which is the subject of tonight's discussion. The midtown is more, if you look on page 390 of your packet, it says, it appears as more suburban than the other areas, the other areas are more urban. There's dual classifications, commercial, industrial uses in this area, so it's kind of like the, if you think of it, the district where commercial and industrial uses can be located. But in the downtown sub-district, that's, those kind of uses are not permitted. So that's how these sub-districts are described and intended, or that's their purpose statements, I guess, in this overall mixed-use zoning district. So outdoor storage was identified to be most appropriate in this particular sub-district. RV and dealerships or uses that are auto-related, those are relegated to this particular zoning sub-district, rather. They're not permitted right now in the other sub-districts, like the downtown, uptown, or even the civic, or waterfront districts.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, my concerns are totally different from that. My, my concerns are the people on the other side of the track. Because I, my, I, I look at this, yes, the tracks there, well, the tracks has been dividing people for too many years. And we, we got a problem, we got the city helping those individuals protect themselves, because on the other side of the track, we have the people who are sat close to the tracks because of their financial situation. And the city has put a $300 bu, 300-yard buffer to help those individuals because they cannot help themselves. And I want that to stay. I want that buffer to stay, not because anybody want to make any money, but I want those people to have as much as they, they can be given, because they are not there necessarily because that's where they want to be. Thank you.
Any other counsel? Call the cards, please.
Yeah, I have one other question.
You better get quicker than that.
I, no, I'm sorry, I'm old.
All right, Member Cole, Member Cole.
Is it possible, and, and I agree with Joe, that a wall can be built as a buffer? I'm, I'm, this is, I'm just throwing this out as a question.
One of the standards of the outdoor storage in this sub-district says that there should be an enclosed, a solid, shall be enclosed by a solid fence or wall eight feet in height to conceal such facilities and the contents thereof from adjacent properties. And it shall be ten, that fence shall be 10 feet from the property line. And then in addition to that, you have the 300 feet.
So you can do that?
So it has to be concealed, yes, it has to be something solid.
But you still, on the other side of the wall, you still gotta have 300 feet.
Use itself has to be 300 feet. So in other words, yes, you can start 10 feet from that property line, but then that 300 feet pushes even further into the property now.
All right, now call the cards, please.
Stan Johnston?
Would you like to hear me? I ain't saying nothing. Thank you.
The last card is Rodney Honeycutt.
Oh, my goodness. Not that late, but it's getting late.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman?
Hey, Rodney.
Thank you for allowing me to be here. Rodney Honeycutt, office is at 3700 South Washington Avenue here in Titusville. And so I'm representing RV Direct, who is the owner of the RV sales and service facility I'm glad that at least one councilman went to the site, because I think that tells you a lot. This is a unique situation. The, it is in the midtown downtown district. If you look at the other uses there, there's basically cars stored there, or vehicles stored there. There's right adjacent to it to the south is a new rental car, and then adjacent to the south of that is a dealership, and they're in the same situation as this site. And they basically store vehicles there, it's just not that outside people are renting the space, it's that they're their own vehicles also. So it's unusual. If you, if you go to the site, you'll see what Commissioner Nelson saw. It, it's kind of surprised me, the railroad track is probably eight feet taller than the ground back there. And so you can't see the residences between the railroad and the, the landscape or the buffer area that's on the other side of the railroad track mostly, not on this side. the landscape or the buffer area that's on the other side of the railroad track mostly, not on this side. So I know that, um, this is different from the industrial, M1, light industrial. However, there are a few places in town that there are M1 areas adjacent to residential districts. One is north of town, south of the hospital, the Silver Star Road area. Uh, they can be 75 feet away because they're M1. If, if the underlying, um, future land use is industrial, they don't have to get a CUP. If it's not, which a lot of times in light industrial, it can be high intensity commercial, then you do have to get a CUP also. And, and that's the whole crutch of this. The client's not asking to, any of the rules, you know, you've got to get a CUP. The neighbors will be notified. They'll get a chance to see if it bothers them and, and give you input. It's just that if you apply the 300 feet from their property, then basically it goes to, it, it includes the entire storage area. It's about 200 feet wide. The railroad is, is 100 feet wide. And so, um, if it was a reduced area, that could work.
Can I? What do you need?
Thank you.
Hold on a minute.
Uh, probably a couple more minutes.
Propose two minutes? I guess we'll call that. All in favor? There we go.
And, and in order to have the storage area, it has to be paved. So once it's paved, they have to have stormwater. And so that's, that can be in part of the buffer area too. So that can, that can add more than the 100 feet. Plus you've got the 10 foot for the, for the barrier, the fence, the wall, whatever you put up. So I, I think it could work if it wasn't, I know it could work if it wasn't for the 300 feet area. And it is less in other areas. Um, we still have to go through the CUP. In this, in the CUP, we have to have a, a plan that's committed with it. So therefore, whatever we say in the plan's going to be outdoor storage there, that's why it has to be there. So we can't store hazardous materials. We can't store some of these other undesirable things unless we say that. So that doesn't mean just to get a CUP, you can store anything there. It's just the vehicles. And there, currently, the, the frontage on the site now has vehicles, all RVs there. And the store next to it has trucks. And so it's already there. I think it's a unique situation. The downtown area that would allow this is very small, and so you're not opening it to the whole area. And so that's why our request, I think, in this case, is something that could be doable. And, um, if you've got any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer.
Any questions, counsel? Uh, Member Stokoe.
Yep. This might be more so for Brad, but I think I'm tracking. So they would have to do a CUP regardless, but they wouldn't meet the CUP conditions because of the 300 foot buffer? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, CUP was required. That's how this all started. They went through the process. We evaluated the conditions of the use, the limitations. And they don't meet them. So we could not support the stat, the petitions. That's when we informed the applicant of that, and that's when they came to.
They couldn't meet it just, it was it just because of the 300 foot rule, but the other conditions could be met?
I didn't see any issues with the other conditions.
Okay.
Uh, that was the one, I believe, identified in my letter to, uh, Mr. Parsons, the applicant, as the issue that was remaining. But there were some other things they needed to adjust in their site plan, and I know they could probably could meet that, but that, this one was the one that hung above.
And let me remind you, if you say okay tonight, don't approve it, all it does is give advisability to staff to, to amend the ordinance for your review and see if that is adequate for you.
Good reminder. Uh, Member Nelson.
And, you know, I understand Vice Mayor's problem with having it a certain distance away from that housing. But Rodney's right. Enterprise has got their vehicles out there.
It won't look any different.
Pat Fisher's got his vehicles out there.
I'm not concerned about the specifics. I think it can work, but I'm concerned about the spot zoning and we get caught up down the road with another situation. I think that we can make this one work. But can we do it without affecting decisions down the road?
I think the way you do it is you turn around and say, if you have an RV place, then RV storage is appropriate.
I think that if you can get specific like that, then I don't have to spot zone. We don't have to spot zone.
And if they move, then it's, yeah, whoever buys it's out of luck.
What do you think about that? They're looking at us like we're crazy. Go ahead.
I mean, we could, if, if you're, it sounds like you're suggesting maybe lim- amending the, or coming up with a new setback, distance requirement based on the type of outdoor storage. I mean, that's the direction City Council wants to go. We can propose, come back with something.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Only thing in, in response to, I remember Nelson is that because the neighbor's kids are bad, doesn't mean that it's okay for everybody else's kid to be bad. And because one person is doing something in disrespect of the residents of the others, that doesn't guarantee. Uh, our job is to make sure that everyone is treated fair.
Are you talking about, when she's talking about the cars already there?
And I understand what Rodney said, and I respect Rodney, and, uh, and it worked. But I, because it's already there, doesn't mean that it's all, it's okay.
But it doesn't mean it's already there. And, and the reason I say that is this. Okay. Member Stokoe.
So I feel like, when I'm, I think our, I don't, I can't say everyone, but I feel like we're okay with potentially, we understand what's trying to happen right now. We also want to be sure that we protect the city moving forward when we might not be on council and decisions are being made. So I, I kind of like the idea of making sure that it does stay conditional use permit, but then adding very specific criteria of something that makes sense. If you already are having RVs there, having RV storage is not much different. Having RVs there, selling them, and then having some other type of storage that's, you know, might not make sense. But something to me, that's, I guess, my thing is like this, when you look at it, what they're probably going to do, I don't think any of us are going to be able to tell the difference of what's happening there.
That's right.
So, and I, I don't want to put up a barrier like that, which just seems silly, but at the same time, they're doing that. Want to make sure whatever we do, implement or pass protects future people that are trying, whatever's going to happen, if that makes sense. And I feel like adding something, just a line like that, it may seem silly and people might look at it 20 years, why did they add this line? Which we do right now with our code when we're looking through it, why, why is this here? But, um, at least I feel like it adds a layer of protection that future councils down the road can then assess and see if that's still the vision that they have.
I think what that line adds is it eliminates us having the spot zone. And that's to me, when I heard that, that's what I thought. I said, that may be our path away from, nobody wants to spot zone and get caught up three years down the road with something that causes us a problem. So, um, Mr. Parrish, what do you think?
It, okay, let me see if I understand. So maybe an additional line. I'm looking at page 384 of your packet.
Right.
Under paragraph B there, an additional sentence maybe to that that says, except for, you know, it says 300 feet required, except for RV out, outdoor storage with all, with limited to RV uses associated or part with an established RV dealership. Is that?
I think that, and then I think we do need to have some kind of distance from the residential area. Maybe not 300 feet, but if we still need to make sure that we're not, uh, getting too close to the residences.
I, I would suggest that, because that, when you get very specific like that, then it gets into like the definitions and we may come back later on and find out they still can't even meet that. So.
What, what is, what is an RV to you made not be an RV to somebody else? I mean, I did.
Okay.
And why RVs? Why not trucks, trailers, cars, boats? Why is it specific to RVs?
Well, I guess for me, this is part of their business. So.
This would apply throughout the district. This isn't one piece of property, one business owner, one business.
Right.
You're talking about writing a code that says you're exempting RVs.
I could suggest if you, to be a little more broad, if you look at the rest of the, the criteria, it's mostly hazardous materials. If the outdoor storage use is, does not include hazardous materials, maybe it has a different standard. Or if it's auto-related only, outdoor storage of vehicles, and that could be broadly defined as even whatever that might be.
Can you look at all of these? But, um, I, I think you have a better handle on you. You, you at least know what you're concerned about.
Well.
Go ahead.
I, yeah, I'm just, it sounds like, I'm not su- it sounds like there's some difference of opinion about what is really the issue here. So there's outdoor storage can, at all, completely, sounds like to Mr. Robinson, problematic. An RV dealership or an auto dealership is a different type of use, a different function. It may look the same, but it's really a different type of function. Those vehicles are moving off the property lot. You have outdoor storage. Those things might not necessarily be moving at all.
These are typically new vehicles with this, the, you're talking about RV car dealerships. It's not private or used vehicles that may sit there.
Correct, and renting space. That's a different type of use altogether.
Member Stokoe.
Would these people be living on the premises? Or is it just storing? Okay, so don't have to worry, concerns about people, it would just be storage. And what is the current buffer for the facility now? Like the rental places, the current one?
For the current RV for an, for an auto dealership?
Yes, for selling vehicles first. So it would be 300 if they wanted to store the vehicles. What would be the, what's the buffer for selling vehicles?
So an automobile dealership, I think, is what you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay. I do not see a specific stand, uh, setback for that particular use. Uh, what I see are standards about, um, permanent, it must have a permanent structure on site, no outside storage other than vehicles for sale or rent, and all repairs must be in an enclosed structure with no bay doors opening or located to the front of the building. Shall have gasoline or other fuel pumps supported by a dedicated standby generator to ensure continuity of the service. Those are just some of the conditions I see. I don't see a specific setback. It's interesting that it does say, shall have no outside storage other than the vehicles.
Uh, yeah, I caught that too.
So the combination of these two uses may not be compatible.
Yeah, okay.
Is there anyone else? The mayor stepped away. Is there anyone else, anyone? If not, you know, we'll, uh, turn it back over to City Manager.
Do you need direction?
I think we need a little more clarity on what you want us to do.
Directions on what to do, right?
I can offer a solution, or not a solution, but maybe an alternative to continue this conversation. I can come back to you with the specific businesses and uses that are in that side, that's.
Do we need to have a vote on it?
Yeah, I'd like to have a motion.
Vote on it tonight. All right. We got the mayor. We're going to give it a better chance.
I hear you still. Yeah.
All right, where are we? Member Stokoe, you done?
I think so. I think it's just, Brad, it's just a little murky for me, especially now seeing like no storage, you know, is notated and yeah, I feel like I can't give you real clear direction.
Member Nelson.
So I think the idea is a motion to have you bring back a solution.
I was going to suggest maybe a little more information that you need to know, see about that particular subdistrict.
Yes.
Maybe you want, I can provide you something that shows you the businesses, the types of businesses, what we have there, the history of that area. Maybe a little more information to give, to guide you.
So the motion would be for you to bring back more information?
Well, yes, and, and I, what I said right before I left was, you had said some things about, well, you guys want to do this, you want to do that. If you can look over what you're hearing and get us closer, instead of just more information, give us, guide us. Because, uh, I, I think that, I, what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing is that this already has the cars, has the RVs, has everything. It's, this isn't going to change the look much at all. But the concern is, and I keep using that term, uh, spot zoning. Because, just because it works here, and if you look at it today and you look at it down the road when we say, go ahead, there's not much difference. But that won't be the case perhaps in some other places that come in. I don't want somebody to come to us and say, well, you rezoned that and here we go. I don't have the answer. I think the word that Member Stokoe used is pretty good in my mind, murky. Um, I'm, I'm wanting to make this happen. I think that it can happen without much effect on the area. But is that true if we make a zoning change other places? I think anytime you use the word spot zone, that gets, that could cause you problems down the road.
Why don't I come back with the alternatives based on what I heard? And I can show to you, describe to you which ones are problematic or less so.
Perfect.
All right.
Rodney, you want to say anything? Are you good?
I'll just say one more thing. If, um, so I assume the auto dealers, when they park cars out there, they say they can't have any storage, but they are actually, it's like if you read that interpretation, you can say, I've got an auto dealer, but I can't put my cars there.
The idea of outdoor storage is more, uh, you're either renting space for that vehicle for someone else, or it's other materials that are there that are moving as part of some kind of business back and forth, but they don't have a roof. Now, the dealership though, the intent, the idea behind that is that the, is that you have product moving. So yeah, if you do have vehicles there, sitting there on display, that's, that's a display as part of that dealership. That's different than the outdoor storage use.
I understand that. That makes my point. It don't look any different though, if you're a neighbor. Car, there are vehicles there or RVs there.
That's possible.
And at this RV site, he could be RV world and he could have RVs parked back there, but he moves them. If they're not stored, they're not rented. So, I mean, the look's not going to be different.
And that's what I've said all along. You have a unique situation.
It is. That's what I think too.
The look is going to, just drive down there. I don't need to walk around. I can tell you where it's at and I can tell you what it looks like. I don't perceive it looking any different if we go your direction. But if we zone it that way, we could get in trouble down the road. We, we hemmed ourselves in a corner. And I kind of like to get this approved without having the spot zone. So see if you can pull that off for us.
I'll come back with alternatives.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I think we did have a motion in a second.
The motion in a second to do what? Okay, give me a motion. They always confuse me on advisability. I mean, is it, is it a vote? Is it a vote? Sorry, go ahead.
Motion for Brad to come back with more information and propose all alternatives.
I have a motion. I need a second.
Second?
Almost didn't get one. Kind of ended it, Rodney. I have a motion in a second. Um, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Oh, never mind. Four to one. Motion, uh, carries. All right. City Manager.
Uh, to Mayor and Council report.
All right, petitions and requests from the public. I know there's none, but I could, I'd say it anyway. All right. Um, gosh, it's been a while. I'm trying to remember where I've been and what I've done. But I do want at least toss out there, um, we haven't met since I went to, since we went to the homeless thing, have we? There's been, okay. I don't miss anybody, but I know Jo Lynn and I, um, Member Nelson and I were at the homeless Memorial Day. I think that's what they call it, homeless Memorial Day. It was very, very nice. I was on my way from one meeting to another and I was back and forth with Member Nelson, have they started? Have they started? Okay, they just started reading names and I'm flying trying to get there and I get there just in time and then I didn't see her. So I'm texting her as she's sitting there and she starts waving at me. So it was kind of humorous. We got there, a very sincere emotional event, especially as they read the names. We got there, a very sincere emotional event, especially as they read the names of the homeless who have died this past year. Yeah, I'm just glad we were there. And then, uh, I went to, um, uh, Scooter's Place over there, the Civic Center on Christmas Day, and I brought some toys. I didn't know who I'd see, but it worked out perfect. There was a, a little girl and four little boys who were removed from one home and went to foster home, and they didn't have any toys. So I didn't have enough toys, so I go to the famous toy store, CBS. And, uh, I, I got what I could get. And, uh, I showed City Manager, little girl, I got that little frozen Elsa.
Yeah.
Elsa.
And, and, and it almost brings tears to my eyes. When you look at her, it's just a little doll. You see her, look at that doll and her, oh my gosh, I'll, I'm sure I'll show you guys later. So, uh, and then a, a little, um, little nine-year-old boy was in there and he had no toys, and, uh, I had a Star Wars thing and a race car. So it wasn't great, but it was, it was really nice. It did, I'll tell you what, this made my Christmas, that's probably the highlight of my Christmas. Um, outside of that, it was a, uh, a wonderful, um, holiday for, for myself and I think our city. And, um, outside of that, I will move to Member Nelson.
Well, I'm going to rattle on Santa Claus. Santa Claus showed up at the Carter House for the Boys and Girls Club.
All right.
And he did an absolutely fantastic job. He made sure all the kids told him how they behaved, uh, what they planned on doing better next year.
I like that.
How they had helped somebody this year. We did have a little problem with costume.
Uh-oh. That's never good.
And he did leave his sack at the house, so we may have to give him the sack back to make sure that he knows he's supposed to be there next year. But the kids loved it. They were, they were a little wild, very excited because Santa Claus ate, ate dinner with them.
Ooh, wee.
And so for them, that was a big thing. And I gotta give a shout out to, uh, Suda Ral's daughter, Mira. We have a 3D printer.
Oh, yeah.
And Suda said, ask Mira to come over here and get it operational. She's a college student, she came over. I was in charge of putting things in the trash can. That was my job, handing her tools. And she has it pretty much up and running.
Totally.
So, yeah, so hopefully this, this next week, we will be using our 3D printer and the kids will learn how to use it. And, and better yet, I'll learn how to use it.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Great holiday.
Yeah. That's what makes it right there.
Yeah. And thank you to Santa Claus.
Very nice. Member Colt.
Yeah, my button was pressed. No. About, about five years ago, uh, the Kellogg Foundation started this National Day of Racial Healing, and that day is designated as the Tuesday after Martin Luther King's birthday. And to that end, uh, the Humanitarian Task Force and the Harrity Moore Center, we have, uh, we're going to have a seminar on this, come, on Tuesday, the eighteenth, at the Cocoa Library at five thirty. And to that end, I am going to ask you, Mr. Mayor, to do a proclamation for this National Day of Racial Healing. I've sent the information to, uh, Scott, and, uh, I, if I could have it by the eighteenth and I can present it, we will, the, everybody in the county is invited, but I guarantee you, we'll probably be the only city that'll have a, have a proclamation there. So I really appreciate it, but it was started, and, and it's a, it's a, the Kellogg Foundation is the one that's, that's doing it, yeah.
And we talked a little, uh, we talked a little bit earlier, you have the proclamation already or? Okay.
He has, Scott has.
Uh, I would be, um, honored, certainly I want to read it, but at this point, it sounds exactly like what I'd want to do. Um, I've done similar things in the past, as you know. Um, so with that, I need a motion to allow me, I can do a proclamation of my own, but we have somebody else that we got to bring before council, so I need a, uh, correct? Uh, I don't need a motion.
You, you just have to do the suggestion in, in the, um, public, and you have the authority to do a proclamation.
Okay, that was easy. We vote on everything else.
Yeah, and what I would like to do, Mr. Mayor, is although I'm taking the proclamation with me when I go down on Tuesday night, the following Tuesday, when we have a meeting, I'll probably get Bill Gary here and if you could, present it to him.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I need to make sure I get the proclamation signed like ASAP.
All right.
Have it for you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Colonel.
Bye. I tried to vote, they said I wouldn't get to vote. So you want to say something good about it?
Well, I think it's a good idea. I feel like it's, uh, it's something that should be, uh, open to, uh, public speaking, but he says no.
The mayor can do proclamations, it doesn't require a motion. He's offered, the mayor, is this a proclamation you're willing to do? The mayor certainly do that.
I'm willing to do it, and I, I knew, gotcha, thank you.
You approve it.
And the actual proclamation is a ministerial act.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, anything else, sir?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, uh, Vice Mayor.
Santa Claus.
You're not Santa Claus, don't be saying that in public. I still haven't told my kids. That's a true story, I still. Uh, Member Stokoe.
Is Santa Claus still real?
Yes.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Sure he is.
Yes.
I get to sit by him. Okay. Um, mine will be brief, I just want to let you guys know that I was sworn in as the treasurer for Space Coast League of Cities last night, um, so that's exciting and I'm happy to serve for this two thousand twenty-three year. Um, we also voted on our top six priorities for the Space Coast League of Cities, um, that our advocacy chair, Mindy Gibson, will present at tomorrow night's delegation meeting. Just briefly, they are low-impact development, which I must say, I feel like we are way ahead of the curve.
We are.
Um, when it comes to that, so that was one priority. Coastal control measures, hardening utilities, the Indian River Lagoon funding and water quality, PFAS legislation and space, this continued support of the space program. She also did include other items of concern, which I appreciated, that were, uh, more focused on local issues, but she included our widening of State Road four oh five on there as well, which I thought was great. Um, so if you guys would like to see a copy, I, um, would love to share it with you. Other than that, I am done.
Um, mentioning that, I'm glad you did. Um, I have a, we, there's a Martin Luther King celebration, Isaac Campbell Park, excuse me. Uh, I am the welcomeer, so I'm gonna have some words, and I don't know much more about it. Um, it is a long event, it goes from noon to four, so I'm not quite sure, but I will be doing the welcome or the greeting, whichever it is. And then on January twenty-sixth at Titusville Height Restaurant, on January twenty-sixth is Titusville Chair Chamber Installation, I think we're all going to that. I will be doing the welcome there as well. And the nineteenth, January nineteenth, Bravard Indian River Lagoon Coalition Straight Talk Event will be at Titusville High School in the auditorium at six P.M. I will also do the welcome to that. But, uh, that's a, that's a real great opportunity for us, that, uh, the Bravard Indian River Lagoon Coalition, um, I forgot his last name, but I met Craig at an event, and, uh, we talked about bringing it up here, and they got it together and had some support from some people. And, uh, they're going to run out the Titusville, um, Theater. So I will, I'll be looking forward to be at that, the Martin Luther King Event and the Chamber, um, swearing in.
Something on the, on the twenty-ninth, on a Sunday? That you, they would be asked to speak at?
The Astronaut Memorial?
Oh, yes, thank you. The Astronaut Memorial at one P.M., I'm also speaking at.
Yeah.
Um, boy, lots of speaking. Okay, so with that, I'm glad that came up, so we can put those dates out there. City Manager, I know you have some more dates.
Yeah, more dates. On the twenty-first of, uh, February, Kane and Associates will conduct an interactive public workshop to aid in the city's comprehensive plan adjustments, and I think they have met with you individually on that, so this will be the public input to that. Um, also, um, attached to your, um, packet is a QR code to do the community resiliency survey, if you've not done that, and/or if you would wish, I, I could send you a link to it, but we're encouraging, um, that to occur. Tomorrow is your Bravard delegation at five thirty at, in Viera, and that's a very lengthy event. Uh, most of the municipality requests are done within the first hour and a half or so. Um, we have nothing to suggest, the four oh five widening, since the league did that, we're, we're good with that. Um, and it's just to move it up for UTPO members to keep, keep the momentum going on that four oh five widening. Um, on Thursday, you've got the CBDG special meeting. This is the presentation from agencies requesting CBG DG funding. There'll be no action taken at that meeting, it'll just be you receiving that, and staff will come back with the recommendations to, for your approval later. I believe, uh, Vice Mayor will not be present at that, you have another engagement. And then, uh, further, uh, on four February, the Strategic Community Conversation, uh, the, the mailouts to those went out yesterday and today, there's some copies of them over there as well. And then the, um, Strategic Planning, second session will be in seven, seven May, so, or seven March, sorry. So welcome back, and our calendars are getting full pretty, pretty fast.
As I said, two weeks, I've got four speaking things. On that February twenty-first thing, what was that again?
Uh, February twenty-first is a Comprehensive Plan Public Workshop, that's what Kane and Associates are going to conduct. It's the same one-on-one meeting that you had with them.
Is that during the presentations meeting for the council?
February twenty-first is a Tuesday.
Yeah, it's a Tuesday night.
No, it's, uh, it is not at the public, it's a public workshop, I'll have to get the location for you, but it's not here.
Is it during the day, not at night then?
I think it is, yes. Hang on.
What, for Saturday?
No, it's a Tuesday, that's why I'm confused.
I'm very confused.
Yeah. Council's fourteen, twenty-eight, yeah.
All right, but the twenty-first, because that's not on my calendar, normally something like that would be on my calendar.
Okay, I'll, I'll make sure it's added.
Please get it on the calendar and, and, that's the first thing I've heard of that one.
Oh, yeah, that's right, you're, that's, it's the third Tuesday. Yeah, okay, okay. So it will be at night then?
I got nothing on the cal, on the calendar. All right, uh, anything else, City Manager? City Attorney?
Welcome back.
Can I add one thing?
Uh, yes, you may.
Since Sarah brought this up, what about having maybe Sean talk to us about where we are with PFAS, what we've learned? Might be interesting to sort of know where we are, maybe if he'd take five minutes and just sort of update us.
Be good. So, uh, okay, with that, Seb, we'll see each other, at what time is that again? Five thirty, five?
Which one now?
The Thursday, CDBG.
Five thirty.
All right, see everybody, five thirty, meeting adjourned.